That's right. Thank you. That's right. That'll be a mantra for tonight. Everybody press the mic down. This is the Town of Fairfield Conservation Commission Inland Wetlands Agency for November 2nd. Bringing the meeting to order, and I think we have a full complement here. So we have Commissioner Hood, Commissioner Alessi, Commissioner Bowen, myself, Luke Thomas, Commissioner Boucher, Commissioner McCann, Commissioner Fain, and Commissioner Omahoney is also with us, who's an alternate. And I think I saw Commissioner Campbell online, who's also an alternate. No need to appoint any alternates. It's a full complement tonight. And we'll go right to number three, the approval of the draft meeting minutes. Does anybody have any question regarding the number one inland wetlands agency meeting from October 5th, 2022?
I have two corrections I'd like to make.
Okay.
To approve first.
Oh, okay. Anybody do a motion to approve the meetings? Jerry, anybody second?
Yeah.
Peter? Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple corrections I'd like to make.
Can you hear any of you? Have you seen the microphone?
The microphone doesn't, does it amplify?
It's still not working.
I think it just records. But we'll try to speak louder for everybody.
With regards to public hearings, item two, WP 22-169 Hudson, 875 Mill Hill Road, there was a comment made by the applicants in turn that they'd like to withdraw the application. And with future fees waived, it does not clarify in here that the commission said that they could not do that at this time, and would have, they would consider that when the application was resubmitted. I'd like the minutes to reflect that. And the second item I had is under item three, map amendment application, O'Malley, 47, Quaker Lane. There is a statement attributed to me that I requested an independent soil scientist verify the soil types on the property. What I actually said is that at this point, I don't think it would be productive for us to have another soil scientist to look at it, because it was under eight feet of fill. So I'd like the minutes to reflect that.
Okay. If the minutes are updated and corrected with that, we can vote on, we can vote on it to be approved with those corrections. So do we need to modify the motion?
We're making a motion to modify the minutes.
Thank you. Okay. Second that motion?
Okay.
Rick? And all in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right. Roman number four, applications for receipt. Number one, WP-22-267 Williams, 3685 Black Rock Turnpike, Black Rock Congregational Church, MAP 72 parcels, 178, connect six existing drain pipes via manhole to the town drain pipe within a regulated area. It's non-significant. No public hearing petition has been received as of 10/26/22. Petition area period ends 11/16/22. Last date for a public hearing or decision is January 6, 2023. And the last regular meeting prior is January 4th. The staff recommends tabling application pending legal notice and departmental review. And there's also a fee waiver requested. Tim, do you want to tell us anything about that?
Yeah, thank you. Do you want me to elaborate on the fee waiver?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So the applicants requesting a fee waiver but not incomplete. The waiver with discussion within the department was to lower the costs, which became cost prohibitive by the applicant. And those were, request was lowered to a staff level permit price. The overall cost of the work being proposed is about $17,000. Original application cost based on the IWP were roughly over 30% of the total project. So the department decided to work with the applicant. And their request, like I said, was reduced down to $1,020.
Okay. I think that's something we need to vote on, though. So can I have a motion to, Dabney, anybody second that?
I'll say.
Jay? Okay. All in favor of reducing the fee for the?
Can we discuss first?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
What was the rationale? Just because it was just outside the, you know, because our fee schedule is the way it works? Or is it not because it's a charitable organization, anything like that?
Yeah, it had nothing to do with the religious institution, mostly because similar to other large parcel owners like universities, the regulated area versus the disturbed area, where we're talking small square footage. So we thought it was fair to not make it zero, but a more manageable cost.
I guess I would just add that we've been discussing the resolution of the fee schedule to address that thing that's on the table. So I'm comfortable with this.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments, commissioners? All right. All in favor of the fee waiver? Okay. I think everybody was in favor unanimously. Thank you. Number five, bills and bond releases. Number one, IWP 2015-16-05 about Fairfield, 452 Brookside Drive, construct new house of worship and residence within regulated area. Request of Walter Stapleton for a final bond release of $2,000. Tim, can you tell us about that? Or Sarah?
I can. We did the partial bond release last year and held a little bit just for plantings and final stabilization. And everything's been completed.
And everything's been completed and everything's stable?
Yes. Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
All the conditions have been met.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to release the bond. Jerry, anybody second?
Second.
Commissioner Boucher, all in favor to release the bond? Okay, that seems to be unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Roman six, legal enforcement actions. Number one, these are all continued. Number one, show cause hearing, Janine Norwood, 120 Wakeman Lane, Southport, MAP 246 parcel five. See clearing of wetlands vegetation and deposition of material within a wetland. Is anybody here for that tonight? Okay, anybody online for that tonight? Okay. Tim, can you discuss any communications you may have had?
Fielded a call late last week with Attorney Bruce Jackson representing the homeowner. We are going to be scheduling a meeting to discuss the status moving forward, restoration plan for the parcel. To date, Redness and Mead has not submitted anything formally to address the violation. So Attorney Jackson intends to push that along.
Okay, very good. That'll just be continued, put on the next agenda. Number two, Cynthia O'Malley, 47, Quaker Lane, MAP 12 parcel 318, conducted filling grading landscaping of a map wetland regulator area without a permit. This, if you recall, was from the last meeting, commissioners, where they tried to do the map amendment. That failed. And this is just still the outstanding enforcement action. Commissioner Fain, you have any questions, comments?
I, there was some misinformation provided at the last meeting. And I did do some research in terms of the amount of fill that was placed on the site. That's not really relevant. It's 150 cubic yards. It's the, that's another section in the zoning regulations regarding fill placement. There's a different section in the zoning regulations regarding fill place in the flood zone. And there was no minimum at all in that area. And it requires an additional, any placement of fill in the flood zone requires additional analysis by the planning and zoning department to ensure that either there's compensatory storage or there's no change in the flood level. I wanted to pass that along. I believe also that the building department determined it would also need a building permit for the wall. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The agent and her representatives, Ms. O'Malley, were at building department yesterday, speaking with building officials regarding the retaining wall. So they will need a permit for that.
Okay. And, but they have been in contact with you and they're doing things. Is that correct, Tim?
Correct. We spoke yesterday. And at this time, I recommended to them that they wait till a decision from this agency before pursuing the building permit that would get held up without our approval anyway.
Okay. Is there any indication that they're going to be refiling anything?
Yes, they do, they do intend to do that. Also pending the decision regarding additional investigation that Commissioner Fain spoke about.
I have a quick question also on that. This is the parcel, I think, that we were thinking about maybe having a independent third-party review. Is that something that they were interested in doing?
That's correct. They are, they are aware of the estimate I was able to retrieve from JMM Consulting as a third-party soil scientist.
Thank you. All right. Let's get to number three. Show cause hearing, Lobo, ATL Builders LLC, 447 Stratfield Road.
Is that kind of a person behind the front? Anyway, that's, that's what I.
Hold on. Somebody, whoever is online, please. Okay, thank you. Sorry, folks. Let's start over. Number three, in Roman six, show cause hearing, Lobo, ATL Builders LLC, 447 Stratfield Road, MAP 31 parcel 202. Deposition, filling of material disturbance of the natural and indigenous character of the land, ground disturbance, and conducting a regulated activity within a regulated area. Anybody here for that? Anybody here online for that? All right. Tim, can you tell us about that?
I spoke last week with the homeowner, property owner, I should say, Ms. Lobo and her consultant, NB Environmental Services. The soil sampling that the agency required was complete. I'm currently waiting on a final report, but was given a verbal that the, no, the soil analysis indicated that there were no exceedances using state cleanup criteria.
Excellent. Commissioners, any questions on that? Okay. Number four, show cause hearing, Zhao, 137 Woods End Road, MAP 145 parcel 70. Deposition, filling of material within a wetland, water course disturbance of the natural indigenous character of the land, ground disturbance, and conducting a significant activity within a regulated area. We had done a site walk on this, and a number of commissioners were there for that. And I just want to commend Ms. Zhao for the work that she did so quickly. And if I can, just as a public announcement, that's really how it should be to address issues like that. There was a mistake. She understood that it was. It was, she was sorry that it happened, but she quickly got on it. And I just want to commend her for doing that. And I think that's the feeling of the commissioners that were there at least that day. And if other commissioners haven't seen it yet, you should really go by and see what she did. And she did it just incredibly well in such a short period of time. And I think.
I got a question.
Anything? Yeah.
She's not facing any more fees, is she?
I don't think so. Not from us. I mean, she had to pay to do the work. But I don't think anything from us, no. Yeah.
Because I'm saying if she does, I would like it to be considered that, you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There's no fees.
Fee waiver for that.
No additional fees, you know, penal fees, no.
Well, you know what?
Well, what about for future applications for fixing, you know, for, you know, remediating things later on? I don't want her to, this woman to get.
That might, thank you.
Get another fee.
Thank you, Commissioner Alessi. That would be something I would be in favor for. If something were to come in from her for something future, for this project, for something, because she did mention something about the pitch somewhere in the back, she might need to do some work. Advise her to do a fee waiver. And I think we would take that up wholeheartedly.
Did she talk to you about that, Tim? Adjusting the grade a little bit so they didn't find anyone?
Only during the meeting, in my site meeting with her. But I'll advise her that to apply for a fee waiver should they move forward. Also, just a note for the record, the site monitors, site reports also support her quick response and activities so far to date.
That's great. That's great.
The site's currently pending planting plan, which they're working on. And, you know, obviously, given the time of the year, may not occur till this spring.
Right. I'll also state for the record that Commissioner Fain had discussed with her, maybe just putting down some seed or something now just for some control measures. So that.
Just, you know, a quick growing, right, mix, just to get something catched up in the road all winter. Could buy a contracted mix at Home Depot and grow it down.
Excellent. Excellent. Roman seven, staff reports, reports from the conservation department. A CWC permit application received eight. B, notice of violations issued. Okay, slow month?
That's a first.
C, bonds released 17. All right. Number two, sidewalks for November. A is Pelmetto Drive, and B is 3685 Black Rock Turnpike. That would be the Black Rock Congregational. We had, the last sidewalk was an earlier time, but I think that we're changing the clocks this weekend. So I think we might have to go to the weekends for the winter.
Sunday, the 13th.
Do we schedule a sidewalk for High Street yet?
Yeah, we did. High Street, yeah, we did that some weeks ago. Sure, the 13th. I won't be able to go that particular day, but that for the rest of the commissioners, fine. Is that good for the rest of you commissioners? Yep, the 13th.
Back to Sundays.
Yep, back to Sundays. And whatever time that was, I don't recall. Was it eight, nine? Whatever time it was, six?
Yeah. In the past, it's been 8:00 AM on Sundays.
8:00 AM. There you go. All right. Number three has supplemental commissioner training dates, Tim?
That's correct. I just wanted to talk, the commissioners to talk about and discuss and possibly settle on some possible dates offered. Again, supplemental training in soil science, wetland sciences from Commissioner Fain's expertise. Again, you know, settling on a day and time with enough daylight was up for discussion.
Okay. Commissioners, any discussion on times or Commissioner Fain?
We can do that. A lot of this is going to be classroom work. So it could be done in the evening. It could be done on a conservation commission meeting if that's more convenient.
Oh, that would be a good time. If it's, if it's a classroom thing.
If they're short meetings, we have a half hour, and then we can tack that on.
I think that's a good idea, commissioners. Are you up for that for? All right. So, Tim, do that.
Wednesday, the 16th?
If, yeah.
Is that enough time?
That might be a little bit quick for me to get ready. But the following one, that's okay.
December 21st?
I don't know if anybody's.
But that's fine.
Probably not.
Third Wednesday of the month.
Yeah.
I don't.
Let's book it.
Shall we say January?
Yeah, let's go into January for that.
January 18th?
Sure.
That's great.
Thank you.
And you could do the following, do one if you want to, if the commission desires.
Thank you, Commissioner Fain for.
Three sessions, I think. One on site plan, just overall, how to read a site plan. So everybody's up to speed on that. Another one on wetlands and wetland functions. And another one on just, you know, how this whole process works.
That's great, Commissioner Fain. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm really grateful that this is coming. And I'm really looking forward to it.
Excellent. Yeah, we all are.
I had two other numbers under staff, not written.
Not written? Oh, please, then go ahead. Yeah.
Number four.
Number four.
Echo. Number four being just a possibility of switching venues for these inland wetland agency and conservation commission meetings to the fire training center. That was offered by Chief McCarthy yesterday. So that discussion is ongoing. Just wanted to throw that out there. Number five, next month, we will roll out the 2023 proposed calendar for the meetings for all of 2023, just to give a heads up.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Roman number, public hearings. Number one, WP-22-289, JP Franzen Associates Architects, PC 60 and 22 Brett Road, MAP 168 parcels 40A and 40. Construction of a new dwelling with driveway drainage, subsurface sewage disposal system, in-ground pool, poolhouse, and solar array within a regulated area.
You can see him there.
Decision may be made if the hearing is completed, or the hearing may be continued. The original 35-day public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ends on December 7, 2022. A 65-day time extension may be provided by the applicants, or further public hearing continuation to February 10, 2023 is possible. Potential continuation date of that is December 7, 2022. Staff recommends approval with conditions. Okay, I'll open the public hearing and have the applicant come up. Hello. So on that table, there, in the middle of the thing, it says push. Unfortunately, you're going to have to continue to push it down while you talk, and a green light should go on. If you can get that closer to you, that's so it can be recorded properly and so that the gallery can hear you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm Jack Franzen of JP Franzen Architects. I'm here tonight to represent the owners of the property, 60 Brett Road, the Schafers, Mark and Hillary. I can't really say too much, because your staff report is incredibly thorough. So I'm not going to go on a great length about the project. Basically, it's a single-family home, built more or less on the footprint of the home that's been there since the 1940s. There's a tennis court there that's remaining. There's a driveway. The big change architecturally is that we've moved the garage 90 degrees. So it faces, the ridge line goes east-west rather than north-south. And we're adding a cabana behind a pool where there is now a gazebo. The other big change is the existing.
Hold on for just a minute. I'm sorry, sir. Ken?
All right. People that are online, this message is for the people that are online. Can you please mute yourselves?
Why would it? I'm sorry, sir. Please continue.
And the other big change is with what we've done, we, there's no water management on this property now. It's right next to Sasko Brook. And we've added with the new project, a tremendous amount of water management, you know, water retention. With all the hard work on staff and our engineers part, just hope that you could vote tonight, because a lot of hard work has gone into it. And the contractor is eager to get started with the winter weather coming. And with that, I'm going to introduce Mike Patrilla from Huntington Company to explain the project.
Thank you. So, Mike, that microphone there is active. You don't have to push that particular one. So if you can get close to that, so it's picked up, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Mike Patrilla. I'm a licensed Lancer Air, licensed professional engineer.
No, that one, that one's the.
I think you need to, like, hold it close.
Oh, close, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. Feel like a game show.
Yeah.
My name is Mike Patrilla. I'm a licensed Lancer Air professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, member of the Huntington Company. Our office is here in Fairfield. And it's been here since 1921, here tonight representing the application. Application is for a lot, at 60 Brett Road. As Mr. Franzen said, there's an existing house that sits on 7.7 acres of property. There's wetlands on the west side and the east side towards Congress Street. There's about just over an acre, 1.1 acres of wetlands on this west side, and about an acre of wetlands on the east side. Earlier this year, we went in for a subdivision and split a lot off. And it was approved by planning and zoning and your commission. And a map was placed on file to form the lot that's, that would have been on the corner of Congress and Brett. Just before we filed application, that's before you now, we, we, we took the map off, combined, and we combined the two lots into one again. The new owner wanted to take the old house, take the existing house, which, as Jack said, was built around in 1947, tear it down and build a brand-new house. And again, as Jack mentioned, there's an existing tennis court, driveway, a garage. A demolition permit was issued under a certificate of wetlands conformance from your, from this department. And the house was taken down. As Jack said, we're in the Sasko Creek watershed, which has a 95-foot setback. We're going to be serviced by public water, which is there, and an onsite septic system. The onsite septic system will service both the proposed house and the poolhouse. Because there'll be two buildings on one system, local health department reviewed it, okayed it, sent it to the state, which was required because of the two buildings, came back with very, very few comments, and was approved. So we have a health department approval on both local and state health departments. Plan was reviewed by P&amp;Z and okayed. And your engineering department here in Fairfield reviewed my drainage computations and also approved them. What we have proposed is all the hardscape, the building and the driveways will be, will be draining into a series of underground galleries. They're going to be, the plastic cultechs, which are very popular. There'll be 48 units. And also to, to get the numbers to work per your regulations, to get the 10-year post-storm equal or less than the pre-two-year storm, I had to add a long and narrow rain garden, detention pond. And the numbers all came, came within what's, according to what's required by your regulation. So the drainage works, the septic works. P&amp;Z was just a, just a review, because the lot exists. And hopefully, if you have any questions, we'll answer them, and we could get an approval by your commission.
Mike, I'd just like to add one, one thing, which is, we haven't taken the house down yet. I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The certificate of conformance, there's a couple more days left on the advertisement.
Okay.
And also, all the conditions in the staff letter, we think are okay. Amongst those were easements.
Why are they running one set?
Commissioner, can you press down so?
Why are we running one septic system rather than two? One for the house and one for the poolhouse?
Because if I had two, I'd have to be a minimum of 50 feet away from each system. So it would take up more room. It's just, the numbers work more efficient with two buildings on one system, which is allowed. It's allowed by, actually, it's the state is the final approval. Was reviewed by local health department. He okayed it, sent it to the state. State came back with just minor revisions. It was just the distribution of the effluent. He wanted distribution boxes on each end of my proposed galleys, which was very, very minor. So.
Thank you.
The state approved.
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Franzen, you touched on very briefly a conservation easement.
Mr. Franzen, you touched on very briefly a conservation easement, and thank you for noting the work that the staff did to prepare their recommendations. Can you elaborate on the conservation easement?
Yes, Mike, can you point them out? Can you point them out on the, I believe there's one, I believe there's two of them, right?
Yeah, it was both, it was both sides over the...
Both sides.
Over the existing wetlands.
It sounds like the eastern, conservation easement on the eastern wetland system and a storm water detention easement on that, on the other side.
This is the detention area. This is the wetlands on the east side. I think one of the recommendations was also, could be mowed...
Twice a year max.
Yeah, no more than twice a year.
And posted medallions to identify the wetlands, so the landscapers know where not to go.
Is that proposed or that existed? Is the conservation is proposed or existing?
I had put that in the recommendation. It hadn't been part of the proposal.
I had some other comments.
Okay.
We visited the site, so I am pretty familiar with it now. It is a spectacular property, and for the most part, I have no problem with the concept of development. I do have some issues with the detail. For one thing, in the future, when we do these, especially for public hearing, I'd like to have the wetlands flagging present on the properties when we go out and look at the site, so we can see the edge of the wetlands that was really non-existent at this time. I did have a question regarding the actual location in the, I guess, was it north or on the north, is it the northwest corner of the property? It seemed like to me that the wetlands did exceed, or go right up to the stone wall, so maybe the soil scientists could look at that.
On the northwest corner?
Yeah.
These were the flags we located.
Yeah, I know, it just seems to me that the wall, the wetlands go right up to the edge of the wall, and I would like the soil scientists check that.
That's, that distance, it's about five feet.
Well, you know, I like, I like to get it right. Again, I appreciate the work by staff, I agree with most of it, but staff is advisory to the commission, and the commission can also have its own viewpoint and make its own suggestions. The biggest problem I have here, and I'd like to see an alternative fees that's required under our regulations, is for the detention basin. You know, it's disruptive. It's, I think it's disruptive both to the site and to the wetlands, and I'd like to see if there's an alternative to that. I know you're struggling to meet the regulations, but I know that you're creative. One of the things that the commission has discussed in other applications now is integrating more stormwater management into the overall design in terms of pervious pavement, rain gardens and those type of things. So I'd like to see if you could come up with an alternative to that rain garden. I think that ultimately, your client would appreciate that, too. I really think it attracts from the property, and because of its proximity to the wetlands and because it's a steep slope, it has the potential to impact to the wetlands. Is there a stormwater, is there a erosion sediment control plan prepared for this?
Yes. The only, the only, the only thing, all, 100% of the hardscape is taken care of by the cultech underground chambers. The big deal on this and many projects that we work on is the two and 10-year storm to get the numbers equal or less than, as you all know. And to do that, there's no, there was no more hardscape to use, so I had to take the overland flow of the lawn and catch that and make it pound up and let it exit at a, at a slower and a smaller rate. That's the only way I can do it.
I'd like to take another look at the comments talking about, and I think it's down to an actual wetland, but I think that's just a client. The other comment I had was, again, I think it's a good plan, but I would like to see a little bit of disturbance line added to the plan. And, you know, we talked about some of the other stormwater hazards. I guess there you recommend a deep and permanent demarcation feature, but I'd like to see it on the plan. And I'd like to see how much of the metal is being protected.
We're having a trouble hearing.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see the, a permanent demarcation feature, I think is recommended, and the, and the conservation easement for those areas. And I think that's generally where I'm coming from with this.
I'd like to see at least give it a shot, see if you can come up with something with pervious pavement or whatever, just so we can eliminate that basin, or maybe, Jeff, you could look at how well that basin could be formulated, so it works with the landscape and isn't such a eyesore, it should be more of a benefit, more of a rain garden, is that something you want to do?
It was a rain garden, this is extensive, rain is...
I saw that, but in my mind, it's just still, pervious, it's still going, going. So...
The only comment I would have is that whole west side of the property, it's all meadow, and, and that's how it's going to be most of the time, except when they mow it. You know, I do the same thing on my property. I have, you know, very small mowed area, the rest of it's all, I started to plant native stuff in there, milkweed and what have you, and it's, you know, it's this tall, so you can't really see the topography anymore. It's all, it's all thistles and, and golden rod and, and stuff like that, so I think most of the time...
I feel like that area will end up, end up just more grass, it's definitely what happens. So I'd like to see if there's an alternative. I'd like to take a look, I know you're in a hurry, but I would appreciate it.
Jack, so are you saying that the homeowner intends to keep the meadow?
Yes.
And do you, do you know how often it would be mowed?
Typically, what we like to, I just mow my property once a year, but you can do it twice a year. We like to stay out of it from like the end of March until the end of August. So what I've been doing, I've just been mowing it in early March, and, you know, then by, you know, by June, you've got stuff that's 30 inches high, and then it gets even taller at the end of the summer.
And do you know what kind of tennis court they intend on restoring? My concern is that there is an elevation difference between where the tennis court is and where the rain garden is, and my concern would be hardwood material or clay material washing into that rain garden if it's not a concrete tennis court. Do you have any idea?
Yeah, we've, we've spoken to a couple tennis court companies, but they haven't decided what to do yet or who to hire.
Okay, and also, would your client consider doing a pervious driveway?
I think he would, like you said, the water is going into the cultechs, so it's... All of the hardscape is, is going into the underground chambers. The only thing, again, the big deal on this and many of the projects we work on, that everyone works on, is to get the two and the 10 to conform to what your regulations are. So this, the computation shows this part of the lawn coming down across, collecting in here and going out at a slow rate. As far as what it, I doubt very, very much it would be an eyesore.
I gotta be honest, I'm kind of, I'm surprised that the client wouldn't be concerned with the rain garden that close to the tennis court.
Could you, do you want... Sure, hold on, let, yeah.
No, no, go ahead.
Can we configure the, the rain garden so that you can eliminate the, the portion adjacent to the tennis court and have one up in the front and one in the rear, and grade it in so that it fits better into the landscape?
Yes. I would still need a swale or something to, to connect to rain gardens, but...
I think that would be a better solution, and I think if you looked at it and worked with Jack's office, you could do something that fit into the landscape a lot better. I think it would be more pleasing both to the environment and to the client.
We could do something up in here, and here, and then connect it, as I say, with a swale, connect it to rain gardens.
I think that's a feasible one for an alternative and an improvement.
The way the rain garden is designed currently, is the intention to keep the stone wall?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the demarcation, yes. Everything would be east of the stone wall, uphill.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions, comments? Okay.
I will, I just state for the record, just going to state for the record that this commission is trying to set some precedence about pervious driveways in this community as that is the way that construction is going to be environmentally friendly and to maintain our groundwater and to keep homeowners from having to put in such elaborate stormwater runoff systems. So I would like this, this applicant to consider a pervious driveway that will also lessen the load of that rain garden.
Right. There's something else, too, that will help, too, if we can talk here.
I'm sorry, who's that? Are you online? Yeah, it's not, it's not your turn, it's not your turn to talk, please. The applicant's got the floor. Can you please mute yourselves online until the, until I allow you to talk, because it's going to be one at a time? Continue, sir.
The pervious, the pervious driveway, again, it, it will lessen the amount of underground chambers that I have proposed. Right now, everything that's hardscaped, the driveway, the buildings, everything's going into the, yeah, it's not, it's not designed to go into...
Right, I apologize, that's, I, yes, forgive me, yes.
So we, we, we can go a pervious driveway, and what, what that would do is knock out some of the underground chambers.
Okay.
I think, I, I'm for that idea.
I would like to point out that I do commend the applicant for maintaining the meadow
Commiss, commissioners only, any other questions, comments? Okay?
I think it's, I think it's really important that we get that conservation easement over that eastern wetland section and the detention easement for that storm on the other side, on the western side.
I, I think Mr. Franzen said that the applicant is not opposed to that, is that correct, sir? All right, so, so commissioners, that's, that's part of it.
And part of the comments from staff was the demarcation, posted medallions, so that's...
Oh, very good. Excellent. Thank you.
I'm just trying to get, the conservation was only over the eastern one, couldn't we get the western one up to the stone wall also?
Yeah, if you wanted that, you could, too. I had said specifically the eastern, just because that was not demarcated at all, and I thought that was important. The western one did have that stone wall that kind of acted like a boundary. I did ask for a stormwater detention easement over the rain garden to make sure that stayed protected, but that can be incorporated into a conservation easement on the western side as well.
As long as we're doing it, I think that's the more functional and valuable weather in the western one.
Yes, that one just didn't seem as easily disturbed to me.
That's fine, so...
Both would be fine.
I, well, would that be something that your client would be amenable to? Conservation easement to the left of the stone wall?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, commissioners, any other questions, comments? No? Anybody here in the gallery who's here right now, anybody here in favor, from the public would like to come up and talk in favor of this application? Nobody here in person? Yes, sir?
I was mentioning the rock wall of the wall.
Yes.
You wanted the soil test? You were asking for the soil evaluation, what did that get?
I asked the soil scientists of record just to look at the area in the rear, because I think the wetlands go right up to the base of the wall in that area.
Is there an issue with the wall being part of that, back close to the wetlands? The wall...
No, I just wanted to make sure we got all the data correct.
Okay. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to add, if the wetlands went beyond the, beyond the property line, if you're concerned about the small strip...
That side of the well, that's the other side close to the stone wall. But if you put the conservation easement over that well, then the issue really becomes moot.
That's, that's right, that was my point.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so I think everybody's on the same page on that from, with the commissioners. Okay. So nobody here in person, is anybody online that wants to speak in support of this application? Anybody online in support of this application?
It's not supporting it.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Josephine David, and my husband, John, and I live at 25 Brett Road, which is directly opposite the house at 60 Brett.
Okay.
Every, every view from every public room in our house, living room, et cetera, dining room, you name it, is in the front of the house of 60 Brett. So the first thing I'd like to do is commend the commission. I've never been to a hearing before, this seems incredibly thorough, and I'd also like to commend the architect, Jack Franzen, who met with us previously. He has assured me that the owners are very sensitive and understanding of one of our major concerns, which is, we're here, and we have seen tree after tree after tree after tree after tree taken down. And my understanding from Mr. Franzen on the part of the owners is that they will replace trees, that they are very sensitive to the bucolic, wonderful nature of Brett Road, which is enjoyed by all our neighborhood and all the people who run here and walk here, and that they will be replacing trees and vegetation. I'm definite, I'm a journalist, I'm not an expert on, on, on water, but it does seem that taking down trees does create a problem there, but it certainly would create a problem for us if they did not replace these trees, because now they're going to have a large driveway that goes right down into a drive, into a garage, which will be facing us on that, on the north side of our house. So I'm very confident in what we've heard from Mr. Franzen, I'm very confident in the wisdom of this committee, and I'm very confident that the, in addition to the engineering aspects of this, that the beautiful bucolic nature of this road and of the quiet and privacy that we all have, and we specifically have, will be maintained. So that's really what I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else online in support of this application? Okay? Anybody here in person, in the gallery, opposed to this application? Anybody online opposed to this application? Okay. Have a, can we discuss it? Do you want to discuss it? Close the, the public hearing? Wait? Whatever you guys want to do.
Personally, I would like to see the revisions before we close the public hearing. I know they're in a hurry. I guess we could do a conditional approval, but I don't know if we could do...
No, I don't want to do a conditional approval. So unless you would, that change, you made the two circles up there and the swale, is that something you, in your experience and your expert opinion, you think you would know now, if you're, if that's something you'd be able to finagle and, and agree to do, then, it sounds like you're agreeing to everything, so if that's something that we can help you out with...
Because what I, what I need to do, what I will do, is the volume of this long, narrow one will be replaced by two individual ones. The only thing I need is in the connection, which will be probably a grass swale, just a connector, northern one for the southern ones, so...
All right.
So the only thing I would ask is that you work with the, Mr. Franzen's landscape architect to blend it in. I, you know, I know you're an engineer and you like those square, straight lines, you know, we like roundy and fluffy, so I think as long as the volume's there and you had your landscape architect blend it in, I would be okay with it.
Yeah, we'll collaborate with Mike on that.
Yeah, we'll collaborate with Mike on that. How long would it take for you to get back the plans to us?
Revised the plan? Next, next meeting?
Next meeting.
Well, no, we're trying, we're trying to see if we can.
We're trying to help you guys out. Next meeting might be December, and that meeting might not actually happen, so.
When's the next inland, wetlands meeting?
December 7th. Could you have it ready by then?
Not December 7th at 4 o'clock.
No, that, that should be no problem.
Okay.
I'd like to say Friday, but.
Oh, well, there you go, said it.
Then I'd have to go to everyone's house and deliver the plans.
He'll be there tomorrow morning.
Make a motion to hold the public hearing open and for receipt of revised plans.
Okay, anybody second that? Jerry, okay? All in favor? Aye. Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate your cooperation.
All right. Next is number two under public hearings, WP-22-258 Fairfield Housing Corporation, 980 High Street, MAP 77, parcel three, parcel 340. Construction of 40-unit assisted multifamily affordable housing development within a regulated area. Decision may be made if the public, if the hearing is completed, or the hearing may be continued. The original 35-day public hearing timeframe to complete the hearing ends on December 7, 2022. A 65-day time extension may be provided by the applicant, so a further public hearing continuation to February 10, 2023 is possible. A potential continuation date is December 7, 2022. Staff recommends continuing the public hearing pending additional information. I will, I'll start with, I know we got some information from multiple, from the applicant and from other folks all today. Unfortunately, we all have other, you know, work and things outside of this commission and agency, we haven't been able to review some of that information. So anything that was submitted today, we won't have any ability to discuss today. So I guess I can leave it up to you, counsel for the applicant. Do you want to begin today with the information that you have, or would you like to wait so that we can also review the information that I know your office submitted and that I know that the, what I can only assume are the people opposed to it also submitted today?
And I believe we should begin today, Mr. Chairman, given our witnesses that are here and we can make substantial progress, I believe.
That's fine, counsel, I just wanted to let, let you chime in on that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What are we going to open up first? I guess we can open up, motion, open up the public hearing? Dabney, anybody second? Jay? Okay. Public hearing is open, and I'll ask the applicant to commence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my name is Brian Leclerc. It's my pleasure this evening to represent the Fairfield Housing Corporation. And I think it's important I tell you a little bit about what the Fairfield Housing Corporation is. It's a tax-exempt corporation under 501(c)(3) of the U.S. Internal Revenue Code. It has a volunteer board of directors, all of whom serve without compensation, and it has one owner. The one owner of the Fairfield Housing Corporation is the Fairfield Housing Authority. The authority is a body, public, it's a corporate and politic body. It was created and it's operating pursuant to the Connecticut General statutes, and as such, the Fairfield Housing Authority is the housing authority for the town of Fairfield under Section 8-40 of the Connecticut General statutes. It was created back in 1964 by our Fairfield Board of Selectmen, and the Housing Authority also has a volunteer board of directors that serve without compensation. And this is not an unusual structure to have, a housing corporation owned by one entity, that Fear, the Housing Authority, and it's done throughout the country at many locations in a similar format, and it lets housing authorities fulfill their mission to acquire, develop, and control housing units. The authority receives its funding from HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, as well as from revenues, rental revenues paid by the authority's housing property residents. And it provides direct housing services to all of our residents in the town of Fairfield, and it's through the Housing Corporation, the Fairfield Housing Corporation, that this application is made this evening. And I have with me Carol Martin, who's the director of the Housing Authority, our Housing Authority for Fairfield, who will be testifying as well this evening.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we're here tonight in connection with 980 High Street. This is one of several properties controlled by our Housing Authority or the Housing Corporation, and includes tree foil court apartments where we have 30 affordable units.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
You're using the Housing Authority and the Housing Corporation interchangeably. Is that something that you can do? Are there no differences between the two?
The corporation has one owner, and that's the Housing Authority, and its purpose is to own property for the mission of the Housing Authority. The corporation is the owner of property, and it could obtain the financing from various sources, very, various, rather sophisticated methods of funding these projects through different tax credits that are given that an authority cannot do, but the Housing Corporation can do.
Right. So I just want to be clear, because the corporation is the applicant.
That is correct.
The Fairfield Housing Corporation, Inc. is the applicant.
That's correct.
And I've heard you mention a couple of times the Fairfield Housing Authority, which I understand what I think that does. I just want to make sure that you're, either you can interchange the terms or, or be consistent because the applicant is the corporation.
For purposes of this, we can interchange the terms because it's important to know the purpose and the function of the Housing Authority and the need that it finds, because its vehicle for these projects is the Housing Corporation, for the ownership. And the pro, the power, and again, we have tree foil court apartments and pine tree apartments, as you know, plus 70 to 75 rental vouchers that my client administers. And the powers are set forth in the Connecticut General statutes, and the Housing Authority, its mission is to provide for affordable housing through the acquisition and development of properties, and to promote, create, and preserve housing opportunities for low and moderate income persons. Ms. Martin's going to testify in a few minutes about the need, which is relevant for a feasible and prudent analysis that needs to be done, the need for these housing units in Fairfield and the demand for them. In this particular project, the applicant, Fairfield Housing Corporation, is seeking the development of five buildings with 40 rental units comprised of 16 three-bedroom, 18 one-bedroom, and 16 two-bedroom. This is an affordable housing project, as you may have seen or heard, and approval was already granted for this project from the Town Plan and Zoning Commission that you'll see tonight, for the buildings and the size of the development, that's all been approved by TP and Z. It's 80% affordable, which is very unique. Typically, developers will only have a 30% affordable, the bare minimum, in order to avail themselves of the 830G law. The Housing Authority does the opposite because of its mission is to make this an 80% affordable project. Again, what remains is a review by this commission, since TP and Z did approve this project. We have a, plans that you will be seeing along with an alternate as to drainage and stormwater management for you to look at tonight as well. And this application was here once before this commission, and it was denied without prejudice, and you could take note of that prior application, and we've made changes, and we've done more studies, as was suggested by the Superior Court Judge Berger. And the experts will talk about the additional studies and very sophisticated studies that were done, and some changes in the plan regarding drainage that they'll talk to you about. And we have a, that highly respected team tonight that will be talking to you, that have worked with us on other projects and have extensive experience in projects just like this. You know Carol Martin, who's sitting to my right. We also have Paul Bailey, the architect for the project, Brian Baker, the licensed professional engineer, who in addition to being a PE, has his accreditations in erosion and sediment control and stormwater quality management from CPESC and CPSWQ. Bill Kenny is here. Bill Kenny is a certified professional wetland scientist, and he's also a landscape architect with over 25 years of experience, who has a graduate degree from Yale University in environmental management, and he's a principal with William Kenny Associates here in Fairfield. We have Jay Soltes, an LEP, Licensed Environmental Professional from GeoQuest with us this evening, and he previously reviewed this site and addressed the environmental concerns. That came up as a question in the staff report that we received a few days ago, and that's, we submitted the documents that were previously submitted to this commission from Mr. Soltes, talking about, we did have an environmental review done of the project, an in-depth one, and we have some recommendations of how we're going to be handling the soil, which we'll explain to you as well. We have John Seer, who's a cartographer and field surveyor, to talk briefly about the surveys and the topos that he prepared for this project, and they're here to answer any questions you have. Most important, I'll, I'll go over the standard that you, you are, will listen to this case under. With this proposed application, we are going to show you that there is no significant impact on the wetlands or water courses, either on this site or off this site, as defined by law, because of this proposed development. And because there are no impacts, adverse impacts to the wetlands or water courses, you don't need to do a feasible and prudent analysis of the proposal before you. Again, absent any adverse environmental impacts, no need for an analysis. But there is no feasible and prudent alternative, we believe, that will have a less environmental impact on the wetlands because there simply is no impact on the wetlands. The court previously noted the evidence presented concerning the proposed buildings is the most feasible and prudent, and those buildings haven't changed. The location of the buildings has not changed, the size of the buildings, the type of the buildings has not changed, but it's wetlands that has changed. The plan for the stormwater management and the drainage has changed, and you're going to see that tonight, and we have an alternative plan to that as well to show you tonight, to have you look at as an alternative to our plan. And we'll have the analysis of whether the plan is a feasible and prudent option, the alternative wetland plan. You'll hear testimony regarding the delineation of the wetlands on this site, and so you know it's a 90-foot upland review area, given the location of the property, and as you know, it changes in Fairfield depending on where the property's located. This site on High Street has a 90-foot URA. And we just note for the record that the commission has in the past allowed uses and development, specifically in upland review areas on other projects, like our pine tree project by McKinley School a couple of years ago, that was a total demolition of the buildings and new buildings were constructed, and they were allowed in the upland review area because there were no impacts to those wetlands. And that development was closer to the wetlands, and it had buildings sitting in the wetlands. This project has no buildings in the wetlands, and I know there was one comment in the staff report that we'll just make clear, if you look at the drawings of the buildings in detail, the enlargements, you'll see there is no building sitting in the wetlands, obviously, but there's also nothing in the upland review area. There are no structures, buildings in the upland review area, and there never has been. What there is in the upland review area is a small section of sidewalk, about 100 square feet or less of sidewalk, a retaining wall, and a vegetated soil area for the fire truck turnaround. We negotiated with the fire department, they require a turnaround for one of their vehicles, so that's a porous, vegetated area specifically designed for the fire truck to drive on, a wooden barrier, like a guardrail barrier that the engineering asked that we put in, and a stormwater detention and renovation basin. That's all there is in the upland review area, no buildings. The stormwater, which currently falls on this site, falls without any controls, a total absence of controls when it hits the property now. We're going to show it's going to be much better managed, and it's going to be better managed for the neighbors, because now there's no controls when it rains on the site or when floodwaters come onto the site, or flows, I should say, come onto the site from neighboring properties. We're managing all of that now, not just the onsite water that flows from above, falls from above, but the water that comes on the site from offsite properties as well. We filed this application back in August of this year, and the matter was moved to a public hearing. You have a record that has reports of our engineers and the soil scientists, and now has the LEP. We've met with the town's conservation department, our new director, and the engineering officials several times regarding this project, and we listened to the changes, and we thought about the changes, and we adopted a number of the changes they recommended. Previously, we had a full code review on this project with health, building, fire, sewer, sour, waste and recycling, police, economic development, the tree water, warden, and town planning and zoning. So they've all gone through that code review as well. Tonight, I'm going to begin by calling Carol Martin, the executive director of the Fairfield Housing Authority and the manager of the Fairfield Housing Corporation, to answer a few questions. Carol, could you tell the, the board again, your occupation and position and your experience in affordable housing projects like this?
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and just special thanks to conservation staff over the past six months, put a lot of time and spent a lot of time with us, so I just want to really thank you folks, I know how busy you are. So hopefully, that benefited our application, and hopefully, the changes we've made will be well received. I am Carol Martin, I am the executive director of the Fairfield Housing Authority, but tonight I'm actually functioning as the manager of, or the authorized representative of Fairfield Housing Corp., which is really our 50, the Fairfield Housing Authority's 501(c)(3) development arm. And the reason the Housing Authority set up the 501(c)(3) was twofold. First of all, the Fairfield Housing Authority can only operate affordable and develop affordable housing in Fairfield. Fairfield Housing Corp. can, its mission is to develop housing not only in Fairfield but in Fairfield County. You folks know the greatest, there's a huge need in Fairfield County, there's plenty of recently published articles in Connecticut Public Radio, et cetera, about the need for more affordable housing, and we really are in a crisis. I answer the phones at my office, I answer the emails 24 by 7. COVID, no surprise, I'm sure to all of you, has exacerbated the original shortage of affordable housing. Tonight, though, Fairfield Housing Corp. is actually developing and acquiring, as we did in 2018, 980 High Street, and the second purpose of setting up the 501(c)(3) is to access funding that the Fairfield Housing Authority could not access, so it opens up other financial resources.
Thank you. And Carol, could you tell the commission about the review with them, the town of Fairfield's consolidated plan for 2024, which I'm sure they're familiar with, but we have copies as well, we will hand out of the consolidated plan as well. So Carol, could you talk a little bit about the plan and its applicability?
Sure. So my good colleagues, Mark Barnhart, Sonya Hein, over at the community, economic community development are actually responsible for developing the plan. The town of Fairfield receives HUD CDBG funding. We're part of the stakeholders in the outreach that they do every year annually to create an action plan. And, you know, no surprise, I'm sure, to any of you that live in Fairfield, you know, the number one priority is to develop more affordable rental housing, and it has been the number one priority for, you know, several of these plans. We're, you know, we're certainly a participant in trying to create more units in town, and we work very closely with the department staff to try to create new opportunities.
Carol, that plan is submitted to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the federal HUD every year, correct?
That's correct. They have an annual plan that they have to submit every year, and that's a condition in receiving the community development block grant money.
And in fact, this plan notes as the first priority for the entire town, increase in the supply of affordable rental housing, correct?
That's correct.
It also references the Housing Authority's project on High Street that we're talking about tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Could you tell the commission about the waitlist and the demand for housing right now that the authority has and how this project will satisfy that?
For the record, we currently just have 90 physical apartments in Fairfield. We own and operate them. In addition to that, we have a housing trace voucher program. Some of you may remember HUD used to name it the Section 8 program, but it's basically federal rental assistance, and we have. federal rental assistance, and we have 90, over, yeah, 99 families currently leased up in, you know, private rentals throughout Fairfield. The last time the Housing Authority opened, was able to open up our waitlist to accept new applications for our physical property was 2019. We got over 1,100 applications within two or three weeks. We did open up our housing trace voucher rental program waitlist in 2020, right in the heart of COVID. We only opened it up for two weeks, and we had 7,600 applications, of which we were only to, able to randomly select 250 applicants.
And Carol, what is the waitlist right now for a project in one of the affordable facilities we have in town?
Right. Due to the limitations of our portfolio, folks wait, on average, anywhere between four to six or seven years, just to get up to the top of the waitlist. We get very little turnover in our apartments. I'm sure you can appreciate that. And most of the time, when apartments are being turned over, it's because of something that's happened in someone's life, and they're no longer able to independently live.
Can you tell the commission how you came, the applicant, came to the project as we're presenting it tonight, as currently proposed, as being the only feasible and prudent design for this development?
As previously stated by counsel sitting next to me, we redeveloped in 2017 Pine Tree, a very similar site with wetlands and upland review. We went through the development. We were at approximately 16.6 units per acre. So we have 50 apartments on that site right now. I encourage anyone that hasn't been able to drive past it, please do. We worked very closely at the time with the conservation staff there. We have beautiful rain gardens, et cetera. But we have 50 units on three acres. This particular parcel is 2.48 acres, and again, with 40 units brings us to the exact same unit density per acre as our Pine Tree property. The big difference, honestly, with the Pine Tree property was we had several building footprints in the upland review area. That's certainly not the case with this application. So based on the experience that, you know, we had here in Fairfield, and really trying to stay right within the confines of something that we've done before, we looked at, and very carefully looked at, the placement of the buildings in relation to the wetlands area, as well as the type of stormwater design we needed to do. The previous application, as Brian has stated, has been redone, and we hope, with better analysis, better tools, that you'll see tonight the changes that we've made, and hopefully it will be favorably received.
Carol, you have 40 units in the five buildings that are depicted on the board, C 11, in front of the commission tonight, and that is your feasible and prudent design you've come up with this project. Could you explain to the commission how the units are spread out in those five buildings, first? And number two, did you consider more units or more buildings?
Certainly, the existing home on the property on High Street is a mainstay, the Judd Home. It obviously has been added on over the years, but anyone that drives up and down High Street, or walks frankly, up and down High Street, knows the Judd Home. It's been there for longer than probably I've been alive, certainly. But we did look at possibly taking down the Judd Home and trying to build some more units there, but it didn't fit, obviously, with the mission of our directors, where there's a balance, right, of balancing the goals of the environment and balancing the goals of our families, their quality of life. You know, putting density or buildings on top of buildings is really not improving families or individuals looking to, you know, walk their dog, et cetera. So what we really tried to do is balance the need, because we know it's great. We know every day how many folks call our offices, but that has to be measured with, obviously, the other environmental concerns of developing land.
Did you consider 50 units for this project? And could you explain whether having another 10 apartment units are easier to finance and operate?
Counsel, I appreciate your thoroughness in getting this started, but can you focus in just on the wetlands aspect of it? You're giving a great background and all, but really, what's in front of us, and how does it affect the wetlands?
We are, but I have to do this, for the record, because of the feasible and prudent analysis, because the prudent goes to the economics as well, something that has to be considered. And I think, for the record, if you look at the law, it's important that we do that, so I have to cover that.
Very good.
So the issue of, and I'm sure you may have heard this in other applications, certainly more units are easier to finance and certainly easier to operate. The smaller the apartment is, you know, very difficult if they're scattered, if they're offsite, et cetera. But once you reduce the number of units, just from an operational standpoint, it gets very difficult to operate.
Did you consider the construction of one larger building on the property in lieu of five?
The architect and I did work on a plan of a single-story building, moving it completely out of, moving all the construction work out of the upland review area.
Why are you not presenting that, and have you not presented that plan?
Again, I guess I'm back to my goals and mission of the 501(c)(3) that I employed by. Our mission, obviously, is to, you know, provide as much affordable housing as we can, but again, not tipping the scale and having a negative impact in the community. Clearly, a five or six-story building here would be completely inappropriate.
Are there also financial considerations in going with a larger building, including elevators, sprinkler system, fire pumps, steel construction, et cetera?
Yes, a high-rise building, obviously, from a cost per square foot standpoint, is more expensive to build.
Carol, did you consider 30 units, one less building or less units in all the buildings, and have a total of 30 units on this site?
We certainly did look at 30 units or 25 units, but again, taking the balance in with the amount of need and the length of our waitlist, and obviously, working with, you know, the same conclusions we drew from Pine Tree, you know, this is a very consistent project with something that, you know, we had previously owned and operated, and continue to operate.
Would that affect the financing if you went to 30 units? Would you be able to finance this project?
Right. So part of the, part of the mission of the Fairfield Housing Corp. is, we're at 80% of these units as affordable. Certainly, you could build 30 units here, but, you know, you would have to make a market rate. It's not something that's in our mission.
Thank you. You met with town officials. We discussed meeting with town officials, and they had several requests, including following the 10-year, two-year guidance from this commission, as well as porous pavement, as well as swales and rain gardens. Did you incorporate all of those suggestions from the staff that we've received previously into this plan?
Yes, we did, with the one exception. I know Tim Bishop, myself, Bill Hurley, did talk about using some sort of berm that has been used, I believe, at a school in the north part of Fairfield, and we did actually walk the property. As it turned out, the grading really wouldn't have, the grading on our property wouldn't have helped try to implement a berm, but we certainly did consider it, and again, we went out and walked the property.
Carol, finally, as the court noted in its prior appeal, do you agree there's no feasible and prudent alternative to this project as designed and presented?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, do you want me to ask if you have any questions of Ms. Martin, or do you want to wait to the end before I call the next witness?
Sure.
I don't know what your pleasure would be.
Yeah, sure. Commissioner?
I have a question. Ms. Martin, the Fairfield Housing Authority is part of the Town of Fairfield?
So we have the name, the Housing Authority of the Town of Fairfield, but really, the reason we have that name is that's under state statute. So once the voting or executive branch of a town or municipality creates a, declares there's a shortage of affordable housing, and they create the Housing Authority, the only relationship at that point that the Housing Authority has with the town is that either the mayor, in this case, our first selectwoman, appoints our Board of Commissioners.
I'm just curious, why the Fairfield Housing Authority is on the Town of Fairfield website if they're not part of the town?
Correct. But we're another link, if you will, that, you know, folks go to the Town of Fairfield, so we try to make as, you know, as, we try to be as open and accessible, so that's why there's a link on the town website.
And under state statute, it is the Housing Authority for the town, because the R T M created it and declared it, and as Carol said, the first selectwoman appoints the members of that authority. So it is the town's one and only housing authority, under state statutes.
Okay. So then, as a representative of the town, the Housing Authority, I want to know, and as executive director, I just want to know, with all the emails that we receive from residents, there hasn't been one positive one towards this, from any of the residents in the area, and I just want to know how the town feels about their own constituents feeling that way about this project, and you as a director, and how do you feel that we haven't received one email in the record positive for this application?
Thank you.
Folks, can you just, there was a question that the commissioner asked. Let the applicant answer. There seems to be a one-sided gallery. That's fine, but please hold off on doing that until we finish this process. Thank you. Ma'am, could you please answer to the best?
Yeah, Commissioner, I see. So there actually was an email submitted, but it happened later today that actually is in support of the project. We typically don't go out and solicit folks to come to our public hearings to speak in favor. I know there's plenty of people that I know in Fairfield that completely do support the project, and maybe your comment tonight might motivate them to write, you know, an email, because I hope, I would hope that with the experience that you have in public town meetings, you know, the opposition and the people that are opposed or against something do turn out to speak. And many people that are either, you know, neither for or against, or for, don't necessarily show up. That's a pretty typical outcome in most public meetings, frankly, in any community.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Fain?
As Ms. Martin, you were making the, or drawing the conclusion that there is no feasible and prudent alternative on this project. Do you have any environmental or wetland expertise that you draw on to make that conclusion?
Yeah, I was not speaking. I have no expertise. I, you know, I have a design team that I rely on, so I was not making a comment on an environmental matter. I was making a comment on the mission, balancing the need and balancing the exposure to any environmental impact.
Thank you. I think that's important to note.
Thank you, Commissioner Fain.
And there are two sides to that. One is the feasible and prudent as to the buildings being constructed, the buildings themselves, the numbers, and the type of buildings. The second being, you're correct, the environmental aspect.
Yeah, I think we're only concerned with the feasible improvement as it relates to Connecticut, excuse me, Connecticut general statutes, it relates to wetlands.
Right, but you have to analyze the economic portion of it as well, under the state statutes in the case law.
Correct, but we have to rely on the expertise of the environmental professionals on that.
You're correct, and they're here to testify, but you need the background of the financial folks as well to have, to make the whole picture. You'll see later, when we summarize, how that all works in, but thank you, you're correct. And if there are no more questions, we'll start.
Yeah, please.
We have, I'd like to call Paul Bailey, who is, while he's setting up, he is our architect, principal of a 12-person architecture firm bearing his name. He's a State of Connecticut historic architect as well, and a 1972 graduate of the Yale University School of Architecture. His firm's developed a number of projects over the year. Actually, over 8,000 residential units have been designed by Mr. Bailey, and he's gotten awards from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation, the Boston Society of Landscape Architects, the Hartford Preservation Alliance, and he's got a number of prestigious awards, including the Maxwell Award for Excellence in Affordable Housing, the A I A Connecticut Design Award, the National Trust for Historic Preservation Award, and the list goes on with Paul. He's designed, as well, over $200 million worth of HUD, C H F A, and D E C-funded multifamily housing units. So you can see Paul is very well experienced and qualified, and that's why he was chosen for his experience in affordable housing on this particular project, as well as to analyze the various alternatives to public affordable housing projects. And he's here in connection with the beginning part of our feasible and prudent analysis that begins with him and then goes to our design experts as well in a moment. And Paul, could you just show the, explain to the commission what the boards are that you brought, so they have some background on this project, the design boards, please? And these are the boards that were, the plan that was approved by the Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission, correct?
Yes, you'd like me to go through the boards and explain each one?
Yeah, just show the commission so they have an understanding where the buildings are, the street is, et cetera.
Sure, as long as you, great. Continue to push that down and point away.
Sorry. Sorry, it's a team effort.
Yes, very good. Thank you, counsel. It's a second job.
Excuse me. Can we just identify the exhibits, please, after they're being discussed?
Thank you.
Okay, this is number C 1.1, which is the site plan. We've enhanced the drawing so it's more, so you could see it from a distance.
Thank you.
So, so just, can you come? Sorry, that's, that's much better. So just to orient you, this is High Street here. North is, is the top of the picture of the drawing, and this is the U R A, or the regulated area, is, is right here. So I'd like to start with the farmhouse, which is right in the center on, on, on High Our plan is to restore and, and renovate and add on to the rear of the farmhouse, and to keep the farmhouse. So it will look exactly the same from High Street as it does now, except it will be in better shape. On either side of the farmhouse is one of our buildings that we've turned sideways, so the smaller end is facing High Street. So the size of the end is, is close to the size of, of, of the larger, of the larger single-family houses in this neighborhood. You can see some of them down here. I'm sorry, those are faint, but if you, if you see it up close. And then, and these elements in the, in the front also block the view of the parking lot in the center from High Street. So the only views are oblique. So, and another goal in this, in this project was, was to create a sense of a village in the arrangement, in the arrangement of the buildings here. So, so all the front doors of the units are on the inside. The parking is right in front of the buildings, so one, so no one has to walk a long distance. And this keeps eyes on the street, their own, their own private street here, which makes The last thing I want to talk about is, in relation to these buildings, is the variety that we, that we tried to, that we tried to create in the buildings and the way they So this board shows the three varieties of buildings that we have among the five, which is unusual. which is unusual to have, have this many types, but we, we thought that that was important. It becomes more, it becomes more like a street in the town that, that has different styles of houses on it.
Counselor, is this, are we getting to wetlands, or I'm?
We have, we have to talk about the feasible and prudent of this design as well. The court case talks about that. The law talks, we have to explain why, and he's going to talk next about why it's 40 units and in the five buildings.
So you're, you want to, you're trying to hammer in some economic aspect of this?
You have to, you have to show why this aspect of it is the feasible and prudent design, and then next we have to look at the wetlands as part of the.
I don't see how that correlates to wetlands. This group is defined and charged with wetlands protection and enhancement.
That's correct, but if you look at prudent, prudent, under the law, it has to be feasible and prudent, an alternative that's proposed. And we have to show, we're showing in this case, there is nothing that is both feasible and prudent, not just on the wetland side. Prudent is also defined as economically and otherwise reasonable in light of the social benefits to be derived from the proposed regulated activity provided cost may be considered in deciding what is prudent, and further providing a mere showing of expense will not necessarily mean the alternative is imprudent. That's under the Connecticut statutes.
Mr. Clare, we can't determine as a board here that only 10 units is prudent. It's not our job. You're trying to sell us the affordability of this. We're not here to determine that.
But you, but, and to the definition of prudent, being defined as economically and otherwise reasonable.
But economically reasonable may be seven units, not 40 or 30 or whatever. We can't decide that.
But we have to put the testimony on for the record showing that.
Can, can you please read that statement again, because I want to clarify a word. I want to hear a word again, just so it's clear in my head, and maybe I'll assist the Commissioners. The definition for prudent, please?
Yeah, again, the Act forbids an inland wetlands agency, as Connecticut statutes, from issuing a permit for a regulated activity unless it finds on the basis of the record that a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The Act defines feasible as able to be constructed or implemented consistent with sound engineering principles. Prudent is defined by CGS 2283818 as economically and otherwise reasonable in light of the social benefits to be derived from the proposed regulated activity provided cost may be considered in defining, deciding what is prudent.
So, cost may, as opposed to shall?
May be considered.
The word there is may and not shall, is that correct?
That's correct.
I just want that for the record, too. Thank you.
Yep.
Just one other thing. Didn't you say in your opening statement that a feasible and prudent alternative does not have to be proven in this project? Did I mistake you?
No, we are going to, well, that's, our first position is we don't have to show a feasible and prudent alternative because there is.
So you're going to present in the alternative?
In the alternative, because there is no adverse impact to on- or off-site wetlands or watercourses. That said, in the event that you disagree with that position.
Thank you.
We have to show that there is no feasible and prudent alternative.
Tim, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just to point out if any of the Commissioners or the public need that definition to review, it's on page, top of page five of my staff rec, if you need to look at it.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, I'll let the applicant continue unless you have any other questions. Please, continue.
Paul, coming up with this design, do you believe that this is the only feasible and prudent design for this site, considering the needs of the Housing Authority?
Yes. Oh, yes, sorry. We considered other layouts, and this, and this was the best fit on the site, and, which also stayed out of the URA regulated area.
Paul, in fact, did you design a six-story building, a tall, high-rise building, as one of the alternatives to be considered?
Yes, we did.
And Paul, why was that not, why did the, did you not proceed with that design for this project?
Oh, let me put it up, so.
Sure.
Preliminary, I'm, I'm sorry, the label is, is preliminary site plan for the Judd, for the Judd homestead.
That is a single building with a large parking lot in front of it, correct?
Yes.
And Paul, you could build a six-story building on this site. It's feasible, correct?
Yes, it's feasible.
And would that involve demolishing the old Judd farmhouse?
Yes, it would.
And did, did you, why did you not proceed with this design? Why do you not find this is a feasible and prudent design for the property?
Because the size and massing of the six-story building and, and the large, and the large parking lot in the front of the property are not compatible with the neighborhood.
Are there also significant increased costs making a tall building like this as opposed to low buildings?
Yes, it would have to be all steel construction. It has to have fire stairs coming out of it. Has to be sprinkled, and it has to have elevators, which raise the cost on a per-unit basis from the, from the low-rise buildings.
You also considered less units on this site, correct?
Yes.
And in doing that, would you agree that that alternative was not economically or otherwise reasonable in light of the social benefits?
Well, it doesn't meet the needs of, of the Fairfield Housing Authority or, or the new residents who would live here.
So Paul, basically, as to moving buildings, demolishing the farmhouse, making tall, a taller building, would these, they're less compatible with the neighborhood you indicated. Do you believe the design that you've proposed and that has been approved by zoning is the best orderly and most proper development of this site?
Yes, I do.
I have no more questions of Mr. Bailey.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Bailey before we, I have a couple. I'll start, and then if somebody else wants to chime in. The, the plan that has the five units, well, strike that. This is an 830G application that you had presented to the planning and zoning?
It was 830G to PNC.
830G. So if I'm correct, an 830G in planning and zoning aspects of it, although this isn't our purview, but it just off the top of my head, as long as there's no safety or, or any health issues, you kind of get what you want. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's a burden shifting, as you know, and it is significant health or safety issue, it has to be.
Right. So, one of the questions I have on, not this plan, on the other plan, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great, and I'd like to point that out.
You want the overview plan, the first one he showed, or the facials of the buildings?
The five, yeah, the overview, nope, 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 nope. That's the one, thank you.
Sheet 1.1 for the record.
Thank you. And again, I'm simply focusing in on the upland review area, because you mentioned earlier, only a certain portion of that is on the upland review area. And because it's an 830G application, trying to keep it within this plan that you have and, and tying it into your analysis for a prudent and feasible alternative, why couldn't you somehow cut that last building in half, remove everything, and put at least on the, some of the other buildings, raise them up by a floor, and it's, you're basically in the same plan, and you're not even before this, this body. Why would that not be prudent and feasibly alternative?
I'll let the engineers discuss the site drainage to that question when they come up, and our soil scientists, but Paul, could you address as to the building cost and design and aesthetics, if you will, on the neighborhood?
Well, these are three stories tall. That would be four stories tall that you're talking about. So I, I don't believe that's, that's compatible with this neighborhood.
Does it matter when it's an 830G application?
Well, that's my personal opinion.
I understand it's your personal opinion, but you presented an application to a different body that's an 830G application that allows you to do something else that isn't normal under our zoning laws. So would, doing what I suggested, or some version of that, to take all of this out of the upland review area, would that not be possible?
This is already out of the review area. There's no part of these buildings that's in the.
No, there's aspects of this inside the review area, and the only way to remove it would be to kind of shrink your.
What aspects are you talking about?
I think you're still, you'll hear, you're still going to have the fire truck turnaround. You're still going to have some of the structures there as well, because if you, you're keeping the unit numbers the same, that's going to keep the parking the same. So it's not like if you move part of the, build the building on the top right, that you're going to, everything comes out. What's in the review area, again, are a little bit of sidewalk?
If you remove the building on the, on the top, yeah, on the top right, if you remove that building completely, why wouldn't you be able to restructure and get every, the return, the fire truck turnaround and all that stuff outside of the upland review area?
Well, you still need the same number of parking spaces. You have stormwater detention. First of all, you have stormwater detention. Second, even if you eliminate the building and make the other ones taller, and can do that affordably, because now you're talking steel, not wood, you still have the same number of parking spaces, which still puts the fire truck turnaround at the end, because the fire department insists on that on all projects, as you've probably seen recently. But you're still going to be, you know, there's still going to be disturbances in the upland review area.
Okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I read the, both court decisions and our decision on this previous project, and the number, the first suggestion, which, it's important that the agency provides direction. The first direction was to scale back the development. It doesn't seem to me that you've done that at all. Have you just chose to ignore that advice?
Development was, the development was not scaled back. The stormwater and the water on the site was reviewed and an alternative plan was devised.
So the, that direction from the agency, you chose not to, not to heed that direction?
Carol's going to address that, yes.
Yes, we did consider that. It's the mission of the Fairfield Housing Corp. to try to meet the need of the town, and that needs to be balanced. I know it may seem like a prudent alternative maybe to this commission to, you know, build eight or 10 less units, but unfortunately, the mission of the Hou, the Fairfield Housing Corp. is to serve as many as we can, and we need to balance that with the zoning regulations as well as this commission's regulations. So we did not ignore it. I want, I want to be very clear about that.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowlen, did you have a question? No. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hood?
Rather than eliminating units, wouldn't it be possible to squeeze the gaps between them? You're, that would get you out of the review area.
That, that actually would.
I mean, I see little rain gardens, but.
You may, by putting the.
I'm not asking to do anything, but couldn't.
By making the buildings all connected or no space between them?
No, I just, couldn't you squeeze those gaps a little?
I think that's a question that, that'll, that could be addressed by the engineer and the soil scientist, because you're still going to have the same number of units, and you have.
That's right. I was thinking of Mr. Thomas's, the chair's idea of getting you out of the review area.
It's an excellent suggestion, and we actually, I did speak with the civil engineer. We, we would love to be able to get completely out of the upland review area. The problem was that we had rain gardens in between the buildings, and we couldn't get the numbers to work.
Okay. Yeah.
The revisions that you made to the plan, do they impact the existing zoning approval?
They do not.
If you were to, but just going back to the idea of getting you out of the upland review area and doing four stories, are you stating that if you were to do four stories, that it would be more of an economically onerous, because you'd have to use steel instead of wood? Is that right?
So the needs that we balance are all first-floor units are accessible. If we go up a fourth story, we would have to make the, we would lose some units, and we would have to go up, as you just said, four stories. They wouldn't be accessible. We have over half the units here. We have 20 units that are accessible. So going up a flight of stairs versus going up three flights of stairs is, is really, we're not building to our most vulnerable and disabled populations. So we would, you know, we'd have to put an elevator in, and that would drive up the cost. And I wanted to just get back to the 830G question, because I think it's a valid and it's an important point. When you say 830G allows a developer to just come in and basically ignore zoning laws, that may be the case, but the Fairfield Housing Authority and the Fairfield Housing Corp., what we build is not a set aside 830G application. What we build is known as assisted housing. So we come at this project just like if it was not an 830G project. We come at the project trying to balance the amount of density, the architecture, and the proportion of the buildings to the surrounding community. We've been in this community since 1964. We want to be good neighbors, and it was really important for us to try to fit in with the surrounding structures.
With all due respect, Ms. Martin, your attorney for the last 20 minutes has been talking about affordability of the project, and it has to be prudent to make the numbers work. So you're really not taking that into consideration. You're taking it to making the numbers work in the project. That's what you're doing.
So when we say the numbers work, it doesn't have anything to do with profit. When we see the number work, it means about public sector financing. So that's what I, that's what I go, go by. Those are the underwriting rules that I have to apply for financing for.
Ms. Martin, could you please explain just one more time how that top-right building could not be reduced and still make it prudent and feasible?
If you're asking, I just want to make sure I understand the question first. You're asking me to reduce the footprint so that the building, rather than shifting it without losing an apartment or two, you're asking, actually asking me to cut the building in half?
No, not necessarily in half, but get it away from the upland review area. Reduce the width of it left or right.
Right. We would lose apartments without going more vertical, which is the suggestion of the other Commissioner.
You would lose apartments, but you'd get away from the upland review area.
That's correct, and I, I have 1,100 applicants in 2019, so, you know, every time we lose an apartment.
And we're charged with protecting the conservation of the town of Fairfield, Connecticut.
I understand, and there's a balance, and I think mutually they can coexist.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question?
And so, moving all three buildings forward towards the street is not acceptable either. The existing house is pretty visible, and I see that you've aligned it very closely with that. Everybody's struggling to come up with something. Would you consider moving all three of the buildings slightly towards the street? We're desperately trying to get a.
I think that's a question, you know.
It's just a question, but I'm.
It's a question. Number one, I don't think it's the best or proper development, as has been testified to, but more important.
I mean, these are good-looking buildings. I.
You still can have the buildings. You still have impervious surfaces. You still have parking, and I think that's the experts, the soil scientists and the engineers, can talk about. First of all, they're going to tell you there is no effect on this wetland one way or the other, but second, they're going to show you that, that there still has to be the same drainage, and there's going to be some drainage or other structures in the upland review area. No buildings, the structures being just drainage features for the site or retention features. It's more of a very technical discussion, which we'll get to next on that.
You referred to the previous application, and I think you said you wanted to incorporate that into the record, and I just wanted to get clarification now. I guess I didn't really want to do it now, but I will, because we've been laboring on this feasible and prudent alternative. Your 2019 plan, the grading and drainage plan and plan for this project that was denied by this agency, did not have the, the basin in the upland review area. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
So can we put this back on the record as a feasible and prudent alternative also, since that was, this was the plan that we reviewed at that time and considered had impacts to wetland, and now the, the plan that you're having, it has, shows greater activity in the upland review area?
Commissioner Fane, yeah, Commissioner Fane, the counsel at the beginning of the, of his comments requested that the prior file be put, that we take notice of it. So it's already on the record. You have access to it, and you can look at it and discuss it.
I just want to make note to the agency that what we're looking at is a feasible and prudent alternative that has more impact than the previous application.
That's a decision that you can make if you want to, when, you know, when the time comes.
And I think that's an excellent question that you should ask to our engineer, given the additional soil, a water test that we're done and perk test that we're done.
Thank you. Please continue. Thank you. So, Counsel.
Thank you. If I may, I'd like to call Brian Baker, our professional engineer on the project, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Just as a quick note, if you wouldn't mind, I, I think at nine o'clock, so 10 minutes Just as a quick note, if you wouldn't mind, I, I think at nine o'clock, so 10 minutes from now, maybe we'll take a quick break, just for everybody's thing, and we'll, I don't know, five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever. Jerry, what do you want? You need, you need to get up, you need, you need, you need to get up. You need, you need to get up. You, you had, you know, a little surgery the other day, so.
Mr. Chair, I prefer not to, I'd like to hear this in its entirety, so maybe we should take the break now, because I think it's as important a testimony.
That's fine. If it's a natural break, we can, you know what, let's take 10 minutes or whatever, eight minutes, we'll start at nine o'clock. All right, thank you. Let's continue with your next witness, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call Brian Baker before you, who is sitting to my right. He's the project's licensed professional engineer. Brian, could you begin by telling the commission for the record your qualifications and experience, please?
Yeah, for the record, Brian Baker with Civil One, licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, also certified professional in erosion and sediment control, and certified professional in stormwater quality, been the business of residential, commercial, and private development, design, and permitting for over 25 years in Connecticut, mostly Connecticut, some work in New York and Massachusetts also. I can go over the, overall, the project with you. Obviously, we've been discussing the project, you know what we're proposing for buildings and parking, so I'll focus more on the drainage system. So again, as mentioned, the wetland regulated area, up and review areas here 90 feet within that, we do have a detention basin. Basically, the stormwater design is going to be, it's different from the previous design in that we provided additional detention in order to meet the 10 to 2 storms because of additional information that we received or from doing additional perk tests or permeability tests in the field subsequent to the last planned design, and I'll talk about that. But basically, the way the design works is your design point is a wetland area. So currently, the site basically flows-
Brian, just first, could you tell the commission what drawing for the record you're looking at?
This is C 1.1.
Thank you.
You can see the drainage based upon the contours naturally flows west to east towards the wetlands and towards the back of these properties on Country Road. So what we're doing is, we have rain gardens between the northern buildings. Then for the paving, we have pervious paving along the southern parking area. So basically, all the drainage flows over the standard pavement and onto the pervious pavement in the southern parking bay. That will then enter the underground detention system. So if you want to switch to C 2.1, I'll put that up, and that's, shows the grading and drainage plan.
Can I ask a quick question?
Commissioner, let him finish his presentation, and then we can ask the questions. Thank you.
As you can see, so the pervious pavement is in this southern section. There are also catch basins and perforated pipe that go into the entire under, below surface area of the parking area is crushed stone, 24 inches deep of crushed stone, along with these storm trap units, which are concrete, basically gallery units, 26 inches tall to provide additional storage. So after the stormwater filters through the sand filter for water quality renovation in the pervious pavement, it then goes into the storm trap bed. Underneath the storm trap bed is six inches of stone, which provides our water quality volume and our groundwater recharge volume to keep the water table consistent and to feed the wetlands as far as groundwater goes. Once it starts to build up in the units, there are outlet pipes to this above-ground detention basin. This one on the C 2.1 plan is sized to provide you with the required decreases to meet the 10 to 2 requirements. In this case, for this basin, the 10-year proposed flow is 1.29 CFS. The two-year existing flow is 1.35 CFS, so we're decreasing that. This does have associated with the, again, the truck turn, this little bit of the fire truck turnaround area and the construction of the detention basin. That results in activity within the regulated area of approximately 99, 9,905 square feet or .22 acres. So the majority, that's about 38% of the upland review area, the majority of up and review area and the area adjacent to the wetlands, and all the wetlands remain untouched. And obviously, this commission has approved activity in the upland review area. It's not a setback, it's not a buffer, it's an upland review area. And then between my testimony and Bill Kenny, the soil scientist or wetlands expert, he'll talk about the fact that there will be no negative impact based upon the design to the onsite wetland. We did provide you also with an alternate plan. Again, this is, should be, I believe, C 2.1A in your package. So basically, this plan, the alternate plan for the drainage, what we looked at was if we were to provide decreases in all of the design storms, but not the decreases at the 10 to 2 rate that you typically require. And my understanding is, under certain circumstances and other applications, you have, you know, waived the 10 to 2 criteria. Now, having said that, we did see the staff memo and the letter from the town engineer recommending that we do go with a larger basin to meet the 10 to 2 because of the flooding in the area and to increase that, that diminution of post-development flows. But this alternate would provide decreases in all storms from the two-year through the 100-year, and it basically would cut that required detention basin at approximately half, which would minimize the upland review area, would knock that down to 6,145 square feet. So about a 38% reduction of activity in the upland review area with a detention system that provides decreases, but not the 10 to 2 criteria. And to talk a little bit about why we need the additional detention in comparison to the previous submission that was before your board. So in the previous submission, we had for, to determine infiltration rates for the system, we did hand dug percolation tests, which are often done for stormwater design. They're done for septic system design and often for stormwater design. In fact, I just reviewed the, you know, one of the ones that your commission previous, or recently approved, I believe it was 4880 or 4480 Black Rock, that stormwater was, the design was based upon hand dug percolation tests, and that's what we did initially. After getting the denial and seeing the judge's order to look at alternate storm drainage systems, our client said, is there a better or more conservative test out there for infiltration rates? So we went and we hired a geotechnical engineer, and we went out with him, and we did what's called the double ring infiltrometer tests. So it's basically, don't get too deep in the weeds, but it's a, it's a very conservative test and gives you a lower permeability rate because you don't take any credit for horizontal permeability into the soils, it's only vertical. And then you pack down the soils, you have these rings, so basically, that knocked our infiltration rate from the previous design down from, we were assuming, I believe it was three inches an hour, down to about a quarter inch an hour. So it knocked that down quite a bit. So because of that, what we did for this design is we didn't take any credit for infiltration rates into the underground soil with the detention. So we're assuming, we know that it will infiltrate, and that's why we'll take care of our water quality volume and our groundwater recharge volume, but for your stormwater analysis, we didn't take any credit for infiltration into the underlying soils, and therefore, we were able to accomplish the required detention with the storm trap units under the parking and then the vegetated stormwater renovation detention basin in the upland review area or just slightly out of it with the alternate design. Talking about a little bit, the, so the reinforced grass truck turnaround area was something we worked out with the fire department, so that's pervious. It's basically a material, it's, it's got little polypropylene fibers that get mixed in with the soil and lock in, and it's used often in areas for emergency parking, fire truck access, stadiums used for overflow parking, so. So that area, while in the regulated area, will be turf and will be permeable. So there's really, in the, of the activity in the regulated area, in the upland review area, the only items that are impervious are a small retaining wall, less than four foot tall, and that's to hold back some of the grading in that area, and then the small corner of the sidewalk for Building B2. So all the buildings are out, there's very limited pervious surface in there as part of the design. What is, is the grass turnaround area and a stormwater basin, which you often see, stormwater basins are put in, often in regulated areas because they're going to discharge to your wetland areas. They will be planted and vegetated. Bill will, will talk a little bit more about that in detail. You know, as far as port, you know, as far as stormwater renovation goes, you know, permeable pavement is listed as a, an option in the 2004 stormwater guidelines. It's come a long way since then, and that was a long time ago. Back then, they called for a one-inch sand filter below the pervious pavement. Now, the University of New Haven Stormwater Center has come up with a new design in detail with a 10-inch-deep sand filter, and basically, we took their design criteria, which is also what you have done on, on your other projects in Fairfield. Every time I see the details are the current UNH standard for the cross-section, which has a, I said, a deeper sand filter for renovation of the soils before it gets into the underground detention system, which has water quality and groundwater volume, which will infiltrate into the soils and renovate it even further. So we're recharging the groundwater, we're providing water, the required, in excess of the required water quality volume, and we're decreasing all the storms as required by your, by your regulations. So with that, I'd certainly be happy to answer any-
May I have a few questions?
Oh, yeah, sir.
Brian, you have a proposal for a .8 acre conservation easement that encompasses most of the upland review area, correct?
Yes. That was on Bill's plan, yeah.
And Brian, will this proposal preserve the existing functions and values of the inland-wetland on the property?
In my opinion, it, it will. I would defer to Bill, to Bill Kenny as the expert on the wetlands, but based on the fact that we are basically mimicking the existing hydrology by keep putting the water back in the ground and recharge those wetlands, that wetlands area, I believe we are, we are going to be protecting it.
And Mr. Baker, your, do your drawings reflect the changes originally suggested by the town engineering department, both at the time of our original applications and their more recent comments when we met with them concerning this change design?
Yes, we did incorporate additional comments from staff.
And could you discuss the, the water flows into the town storm drains, both at present and as proposed?
Okay, as I mentioned, I'll, I'll list out under the assumption of the, the plan that gives you the 10 to 2 requirement, which is the, the biggest decrease, so the water that goes off-site in, you know, off-site across private property and down into the county lane system, or country road system. So under your existing two-year storm, 1.35 CFS, that'll be knocked down to 0.42. The existing 10-year storm, 3.82 CFS, down to 1.29, so well over 50% increase. 25-year storm, 5.62 CFS, down to 2.26. 50-year storm, 7.07, down to 3.23. 100-year storm, 8.58, down to 4.31. So we'd be cutting those flows basically in half off-site, leaving the area. We, we have very limited area that goes out to High Street. It just, there's a high point right in the front of the property, so we are decreasing flows out to High Street, but that's significantly, it's like a 10-acre drainage area, and we have this front .2 acres, and we're decreasing that drainage by taking some of the front yard area and this lower driveway and bringing it back into our, our proposed drainage system.
And Brian, what is your professional opinion as to whether, as proposed, the stormwater is being properly managed, both during and after construction?
I, I believe it is.
And will this development have an adverse impact because of any uncontrolled runoff, either into the site wetland or downstream water courses or properties?
Not if it's constructed as designed, no.
And am I correct that currently there are no controls on the site for runoff?
Currently, yes, there's no detention per se. You might get a little bit of detention in the, in that basin, in the depression, but I believe the significant amount of the water that the people on Country Road are getting is all of these, these yards and basically the back half of the houses and the driveways from, from this upper street flow to these backyards, flow down this stone wall and come into our site here. So I think a lot of that flow and charge that they're getting is coming through there. We are proposing, and again, in order to meet the 10 to, we, we're proposing to detain that off-site drainage that's coming onsite also.
Brian, in addition to this project having no adverse effects to the wetlands or water courses either on or off-site, does this project comply with state and town stormwater management standards for water quality flow and groundwater recharge volume?
Yes.
Brian, could you talk about the phasing as well? That's an issue the staff report brought up, we just addressed that a little bit.
Sure. So part of the Fairfield requirements are that four buildings are constructed, all of the infrastructure, storm drainage, parking, everything else gets built first prior to building. So what we've done, and this is basically similar to the previous plan that we submitted, we have this area, this lower southeastern building will be a temporary sediment trap that will trap any of the work going on and the activity above that with a filter berm that with a temporary pipe that heads out to the High Street drainage system. So during this phase is when all your drainage, your parking, your utilities, everything gets constructed and, and gets tightened up, and basically, the parking gets paved with its, its first course. Then, and, and obviously, the, because it's part of the stormwater system, the detention basin gets constructed as part of this initial phase. After that's all complete, the site is buttoned up and we have all our stormwater- After that's all complete, the site is buttoned up, and we have all our stormwater in place. Then we would go to Phase 2, which is the construction of the actual buildings, which is on the following sheet. So this is Phase 2, where you would eliminate, now you have the detention basin in place and functioning. You eliminate the temporary sediment trap and then begin construction of the five buildings in the area.
Brian, will either your plan with a larger detention basin or the alternate that you presented have adverse impacts either on the onsite wetland or downstream water courses or properties?
In my opinion, they will not.
And I'd like to go through some of the engineering staff comments as well as the conservation comments. As to engineering, you received, we received, a statement of consistency. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that indicates that the plans submitted have been inspected and are consistent with engineering's concerns, correct?
Correct.
The first note that came in was that it's recommended the plan as proposed with the 10-year, 2-year be adopted versus the alternate you presented. I don't think that requires any comment. The next staff comment seeks detail on the earthen berm and earthen level spreader as set forth in the plans. Do you want to talk about that a little bit to answer that question?
Yeah, I don't know that we need to get into the weeds too much, but these are minor details, and we will provide them to engineering. It's a detail for how the earthen berm is constructed at the outlet of the detention basin.
Also, the staff was seeking details on the stormwater detention units, asking if they're H-20 loaded?
Yes, we'll provide them with some additional construction details on the storm trap units. Those are concrete units, and they are H-20 rated.
Thank you. There's also an inquiry as to what the connection to High Street is going to carry.
So... Basically, there is a perforated pipe that sits at the top of the, above the storm trap units, sorry, in here that runs out into High Street. That is basically, we'll call it a super-high-level overflow, something beyond 100-year storm that would fill those up. There would be a relief valve basically out to High Street, and that was a request of engineering in the previous iteration.
Engineering asked us to put that pipe in specifically, correct? And one of the other comments recommended more cleanouts on the detention system.
Yeah, we can provide additional cleanouts.
There was also a note regarding the 24-inch stone reservoir next to the storm trap ST-1 system, and it was inquiring specifically as to the amount of stone over those rechargers. Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, so we'll give them a calculation of the amount of stone there. It's basically six inches below the system is a stone bed. I believe it's six inches above also. Well, I can give them a quantity for all the stone that is going to have to come in.
And finally, they ask you to explain the function of the catch basin and perforated pipe on the south side of PRDA-1D system, not connected to the single-trap system.
Yeah, so this is the, and I'll clarify that with him, the catch basins at the beginning here are lengths of perforated pipe, 12-inch perforated pipe that come back into a stone bed, which is under the entire parking area. So basically, it's to feed the water back into the stone bed and into the detention system.
And finally, there's a discussion in the conservation report regarding a conservation easement with delineation, stormwater detention/stewardship easement for the drainage system and an operation and maintenance plan. Will those all be agreeable conditions to this approval?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll open it up to Commissioner Fain first.
For the record, I just wanted to disclose, I'm a professional environmental scientist. I'm also certified professional Rose and Seven Control. So the first question I have regarding your design is, you're draining, from what I understand, your impervious pavement onto your pervious pavement?
Correct.
So that doesn't seem to be consistent with best management practices. How are you going to keep the sand and salt that you're going to use on the driveway from clogging your pervious pavement?
There will not be sand used on the site. So the storm, or the winter maintenance treatment will be the same as it would be for any pervious site.
And how would that be insured?
As it is on any site that you've approved pervious pavement on any site that you have in Fairfield. I don't know what the mechanism is, but there would be no sand allowed.
I've never seen that before. It's unusual for the impervious to drive onto pervious for that very reason. And it's typically, especially in a situation like this where you have people that are, need accessibility, salt may not be enough, and sand is often used to provide traction, not only for cars, but for vehicle, or for pedestrian transport. My second question is, I know you looked at the peak runoff. Did you consider volumes at all?
Yeah, that was part of the groundwater recharge volume calculation, which is required to, in order to mimic the amount of volume of water that is recharged back into the ground post-development.
Did you consider post-development versus pre-development total volumes of runoff generated on the site?
We have not calculated that.
Could you do that?
We could.
I would like to see that, because I think in this situation, where you have limited availability and limited places to drain, the volume could have impact both on the neighboring properties and also on the wetland itself. So I'd definitely like to see volumetric calculations. In terms of the function and values that your attorney alluded to, are you considering any other function and values to wetlands other than stormwater? You said there's no negative impact.
I would defer to Bill Kenny on anything other than, my statement of no impact would be the fact that I don't believe we will be providing too much water or not enough water to the system, and that hydrologically, it will still function properly. Beyond that, I would defer to Bill.
The plans I have show no inverts for the outlets into that detention basin or elevation. Are those available, and also for the outlet structure?
Yeah, they probably are, we can...
Yeah, I couldn't find, I know it's probably in the detail, but it wasn't on the plan sheets.
They're in the details of the cross-section, but yes, I'll add those to the plans.
And did you consider the impact at the property line or just at the outlet structure?
What's that? I'm sorry.
When your design point was at the outlet structure of the basin, not at the property line, is that correct?
My design point is at the edge of the wetlands.
The upland edge of the wetlands?
Correct. So everything, the entire perimeter of the wetland.
Okay. And I just wanted this follow-up question. On the previous application, you said you made significant changes based on more work, more infiltration, so you used double-ring infiltrometers. But what was your conclusion in terms of impact to the wetlands on this thing for the previous project?
Previous project, I believe, would not have impacts to the wetlands.
But now you've reversed that position.
I don't, not necessarily with the previous project, the way it was designed with that overflow outlet. Basically, what would have happened if the infiltration rates that are seen onsite are much slower, as with our second testing, the flows would hit that overflow pipe more quickly and go out to Cross Street. So I don't know, it wouldn't have any change in impact to the wetlands compared to our current plan, but there would have been additional flows out to High Street. And again, I believe that, we didn't take credit for infiltration, and I think that the double-ring infiltrometer test is super-conservative. We've designed a lot of systems with percolation testing and hand-dug board tests, and in the thousands of projects we've designed, we've never had a blowout or an overflow or issues. So there will, there will be, I believe, again, based upon 25 years of experience, there'll be more infiltration than that stormwater infiltrator test showed, and there will also be some horizontal flow. I mean, the water does not always go directly down. You know, it travels, it goes down, hits the water table, and then travels through.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, Mr. Baker, you mentioned in the initial phase of construction, there'll be a temporary drainage pipe to High Street. How is that connected to a drainage system on High Street? And also, did you later mention there'll be a permanent drain going to High Street?
Yeah, the permanent drain to High Street was that overflow pipe that I had mentioned, just for those, if the system gets in excess of 100-year storm, there's a relief valve that engineering requested. But the... Yeah, there is a proposed 12-inch plastic pipe, HDP pipe, that goes across and ties into an existing manhole in High Street.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
Mr. Baker, just to clarify, you said you're getting runoff from Oakwood onto your property?
Correct.
Even though that the topography is showing from High Street back? It's like six feet over a 600-foot run. It's going from west to east.
The runoff is going from west to east, and then right above our property, at the property that is labeled Maria and Andre Bogatikov, that was my guess, there's a low point there with a hole in the stone wall, about two-foot diameter, where the water all flows through onto our site. And it basically catches, like I said, the backyards, and if you drive up that road, you'll see like, you know, the fronts of the driveways go out to the street, the backs and any decks and patios come back, run along that stone wall and onto our property.
Even though it's showing that it's decreasing as you go from west to east, not north to south?
No, it's...
That's what I'm showing on the topography map, is west to east is where I'm seeing.
It goes west to east, but here, there is a low point.
So maybe somebody's backyard has a low point, but it's not the whole property line.
Right. Well, here's, yeah, it would drain, basically what happens is the water comes off of these properties here, and it drains through the backs of these properties. There's like a low spot. It drains all the way through to this low spot here. You can see where this contour is, and then comes through the stone wall.
I understand what you're saying. It's just showing me that, when we close the map here, what's your elevation at High Street?
At High Street?
175. 175, and at the back of the property, it's what, 169?
163.
No, the back of the property on Oakwood. Let's not go on the back of the property on that side.
169.
Okay. So and how long of the property line? So we're really looking at six foot over 500 feet. I wouldn't say that you're receiving a lot of water from Oakwood. I wouldn't say that.
It's relatively flat. We're receiving the water, though. I mean...
Person's backyard in the back corner of the property, correct? According to you, that's what you just said.
If you want, if we could look into it further, there is, I provided you with a drainage area map in the engineering calculations, which shows basically exactly what drainage comes from upgrading onto our property.
Well, look at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that might help.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to now call John Seer from Peter Flynn Surveying.
Counsel, may I inquire as to how many witnesses you may have?
I then have, Mr. Seer is very quick. Then we're going to have William Kenny, the soil scientist, and then Jay Saltz, the LEP.
Okay. I, just for the record and just to accommodate everybody, if around an hour from now, 10:30 or so, we'll see where we are, and we'll either start others, or if you're not done by then, or we might just call it a day and have it continued, just to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Mr. Seer. Could you tell the commission your occupation?
Sorry, that one you don't have to push. That one's always on. Yep.
I'm a cartographer, I'm a co-owner of Flynn and Seer Land Surveying. We were hired to do the existing conditions survey of the lot.
And Seer, you prepared the original and all the updated surveys for this project, correct?
Yes.
How did you go about preparing the surveys?
Well, we started the assessor's office, collect the deeds, get any of the survey mapping in the town clerk's office, as well as information from the engineering department.
And did you shoot both the site as well as neighboring streets for the elevations?
Yes, we did.
And how many different data points did you have approximately?
I don't remember how many we had. I know I had to answer that last time when I was here, but I did tie into five different subdivisions to ensure the A2 survey.
And could you explain the footnote regarding the NAVD 88 datum and your elevations?
That's just a system of measurement that the town requires. It was created by the United States Geological Survey. It used to be 1929 datum, but with our technology now, it's been updated to 1988. It's just a system of knowing where you are above sea level.
And are the contours on the maps provided correct in this case?
Yes.
You were onsite, obviously, performing the topography and the shooting of these numerous elevations, correct?
Correct, I was.
Thank you. I have no further questions. And Mr. Chairman, why I had this, this came up at the last hearing, because the town has various maps, whether they're sewer and engineering, and they have different numbers because they use different datum bases. But the fact is, if you, they're all the same height, no matter what map you look at, you may just have to do an adjustment on a map.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue.
I'd like to call William Kenny, Bill Kenny, soil scientist, please. Please hear.
Thank you.
And Bill, could you begin by telling the commission your education background, experience, and certifications, please?
Good evening. I am Bill Kenny. I'm the principal of William Kenny Associates here in Fairfield. I'm a professional wetland scientist, soil scientist, and landscape architect. I have a degree from UConn in landscape architecture and a degree from the Yale School of Forestry and Environmental Management, and have been working in this area for about 30 years.
Thank you. And preliminarily, Mr. Kenny, I have a question about a few sites in Fairfield where construction has recently been allowed in upland review areas. Do they include 4480 Black Rock Turnpike and 277-301 Berkeley Road?
That's my understanding, my understanding is that those projects have been approved by this agency.
I just ask that the commission take notice of these as construction was allowed in an upland review area, and that is permissible to do construction, although in this case, we have no actual structures, buildings being put in those areas. Bill, could you go through your wetland impact analysis for this site and explain it to the commission?
Yes. What I'm, in summary, what I'm going to do is review my findings with regard to existing conditions and then proposed conditions, and then look at potential impacts and mitigation and alternatives. In summary, it is my professional opinion that the project as designed and the one that was proposed in 2019, neither one of those are likely to have an adverse impact to a wetland or water course on the property or off the property. Property is a two-and-a-half acre site. It's rectangular in shape. It runs west to east there, and it primarily is pitching from the northwest down to the southeast. It's relatively gently sloping. It about, a 2% average grade across the site. The wetland in the southeast corner of the property, there's the house, the barn, and the garage and shed and the western... the garage and shed in the western portion of the property. There's what I would call three ecological communities on the property. At the western end, you have more of your traditional residential landscape with the structures, ornamental plantings, lawn, more of a manicured lawn. In the central portion of the property, you have a field, which characterizes a rough lawn. There's trees along the property line, evergreen and deciduous trees, really no trees in the middle. It's a rough lawn area. The last third of the property is a broadleaf deciduous woodland, and that includes both upland and wetland areas. So it's pretty much a one-third split with each area. There is no formal stormwater management on the property, but I will say, based on the low impervious cover, the low development, that that's not a major factor because there's low impervious cover, but there's not a formal stormwater management system. Some of the discussion about the homes to the north, you know, I think of that wall like a curb along a road, and you may have a pitch along the road and water comes along that, and then when it hits a low spot like a catch basin, the water then changes direction and goes into the catch basin, and in this case, it comes into here. And the volume, although it may be small, with the standards that are used for calculating runoff, that the, Brian Baker was able to calculate that there, according to standard industry calculations and methods for measuring runoff from a property, there is some runoff coming from those properties on, onto this property. Also, it, you know, we're not just concerned about surface water runoff, but we're also concerned about groundwater movement, particularly with this wetland, that it has a fair amount of its water is coming from groundwater discharge. So, that water, the watershed for both the surface water and the groundwater is substantially the same in, in most cases. So, it, it either lands on the ground and then runs off, or infiltrates into the ground and slowly makes its way in a generally the same direction that it would on the surface. Sometimes, if you have lots of bedrock, that could change, but at this site, bedrock is not a influencing factor, so. The wetland on the site is relatively small. It's about a tenth of an acre, about 5% of the property. It also is gently sloping. Right where it's at the property line, it becomes relatively level, and it's a shallow depression. There, it's a red maple swamp. Red maple swamps are the most common wetlands in the region. The woodland, the woodland trees, both in the wetland and in the upland, are primarily native trees. The upland is dominated by oaks and hickories. The shrub layer is primarily invasive vegetation. There's a lot of deer activity here. There's, but the primary shrub in the shrub layer is burning bush or winged diognamus. Other, and the ground cover is similarly, it's a mix of both native and non-native plants. The wetland, we have reviewed that wetland area in the spring of both 2019 and the spring of this year. During the previous application, there was questions about whether that or not that area was a vernal pool. Vernal pools are of concern or interest because they, they're a wetland area that can provide breeding habitat for amphibians, certain amphibians, salamanders and frogs, wood frogs in particular, spotted salamanders, those are common vernal pool species. They, they need a forest to live in throughout the year. During the breeding season, they need a ponded water area where they can lay their eggs. Those eggs can hatch, the young can develop over several months until they're of an age where they can then themselves go out into the forest and spend their, the rest of the year in the forest. So, there's a couple of critical things for the vernal pool to be suitable habitat. One is the habitat within the pool, and then the other is the habitat surrounding the pool. So, the habitat within the pool, you need that water there for just the several months. It needs to be a decent depth, one to two feet, so that those eggs and the young, there's enough water there over a long enough period of time that they, that there's time for both the eggs to hatch and then the young to develop. So if you have some standing water for a week, and then the area dries out, you're not going to be able to have sufficient conditions, adequate conditions, for obligate vernal pool species to, to develop in that pool. So it won't be a functioning pool based on that. And the other critical component of having a successful vernal pool habitat is to have a substantial amount of forest land surrounding a pool. There's been a publication that's been used throughout the region for the last 10 or more years that was, one of the authors was Dr. Clemmons, Michael Clemmons, and it's a publication about preserving breeding pools in residential and commercial developed areas. And that publication has identified a zone of 700 feet from the pool, where you really need to have 75% of that area preserved, based on the studies that they evaluated. They, they reviewed many, many pools throughout the northeast, and that you want a substantial, certainly more than 50% of that forest, to be intact within that 700-foot zone around the pool. So the wetland in this site, although there's a shallow depression and you get some standing water, it's only a few inches of water, it's very intermittent, it doesn't persist for months at a time. And also, the land use surrounding this pool, within 700 feet of the pool, is, the, the amount of forest is significantly below 50% and probably below 25%. So, for those reasons, and also during our direct observations during the breeding season in 2019 and 2022, we found no evidence of breeding or development of vernal pool obligate species within that wetland. So we've made a conclusion that that area is a, it's a wetland, it's functioning moderately, it's a, it's a moderate wetland, it's a small wetland area, it's a very common wetland area, but it's not a vernal pool, and it's certainly worthy of protection. During the last application, the housing authority hired another wetland scientist to give another opinion with regard to the vernal pool, and that was Chris Allen. He was a professional wetland scientist with Land Tech of Westport, and he also concluded that the area was not a vernal pool. And I, the, some, some of the concerned neighbors hired a wetland scientist as well to review the project, and they did not make a conclusion that the area was a vernal pool. So several people have looked at it, and several professionals with expertise in that area and have concluded that that area is not a vernal pool. So, we were, our involvement with this project included mapping, identifying where the wetlands are, field marking where those wetlands are, assessing the wetland conditions, and also we were, worked very closely with the design team and the applicant to develop a design for this project that would not have an adverse impact to the wetland. So we worked both as landscape architects and ecologists and wetland scientists with regard to this property and as soil scientist. We mapped the wetlands on the site, and then, and we did that in 2019, and at that time, the director of the department was onsite with me when I did do the mapping. Brian Carey was onsite with me at, at that time, and Chris Allen also, a soil scientist, wetland scientist, reviewed the wetland boundary that I identified and marked and, and agreed with that mapping. I'd like, so with regard to the proposed improvements and potential impacts, just a little background information, when I consider the potential for an adverse impact, I, I look at what I, what is commonly known in the industry as direct impacts or indirect impacts, and both short-term and long-term for both of those. And direct impacts would be activities actually occurring within the wetland, that you might put a driveway through a wetland to get access from one side to the other, something like that. So those would be direct impacts. There are no activities proposed within the wetland itself, so there, there are no adverse impacts from direct activities in, in, neither in the short-term or the long-term, because there's no activities proposed within the wetland. So then we focused on the potential for indirect impacts, and again, during the short-term and the long-term. And short-term, I consider that to be during construction. So, once the construction's done and the development's done, and then you move on in perpetuity, that's what we consider the long-term. And with, with regard to indirect impacts, you look at something that's happening near the wetland, how could that potentially affect the, the wetland? And in, in most cases, it comes down to water management. Surface water management, groundwater management. If there was a septic system on the site, how do you manage the water that flows from that septic system? There's no septic system proposed here. This, this property would be connected to the public sewer, so there's no potential for an adverse impact from the, from the sanitary discharge on the property. So then we're left with the stormwater management and its impact to both surface water flow and groundwater flow. So, we looked at the short-term during construction, worked closely with Civil One Engineers, Brian Baker, and there's a number of factors related to that that lead me to conclude that there won't be an adverse impact. One is that the phasing, well, overall, the project overall is not of significant, of relatively large size. It's a relatively small, moderately sized project. It's not 10, 20 acres. It's on a two and a, 2.4 acre property. One-third of the property is being, for the most part, being preserved, probably a little less than that, about a quarter of the property being preserved, that won't be disturbed during construction. And then what's, to, to reduce, what's, another important factor is that the project will be phased. So, portions of the project will be built and stabilized before they move to the next portion of the project. And then, when you combine that with the fact that the property is relatively level, it's about an average 2% slope, the potential for erosion is, is much less because it's not a steeply sloping site like the property you had that you reviewed on Black Rock Turnpike. That was a very steeply sloping site, and had significant cuts and so forth. So a lot more difficult to control soil erosion and sedimentation on a project like that, on this project, because it's relatively level. It's much easier to control soil erosion and sedimentation. So, one of the key ways to control erosion is limit the amount of disturbance at any one time. So the phasing is, is very helpful with that. Next, you have mitigation measures, you have your, your standard measures, silt fencing, sediment traps, stabilized construction access, and things like that. And so, those are standard measures, that type of thing that you see on every project and you review on and approve on a regular basis. There's state manual, where the state of Connecticut has developed guidelines for that, and Brian Baker, the professional engineer, has used that manual to design this project and the soil erosion and sediment control measures for the project. That, also, a good thing that happens in Fairfield and not a lot of other towns is that you require a site monitor for your projects that you approve, so that there'll be someone that stops by there, particularly on a project like this, at least once a week, and, and immediately after larger storm events. That's an independent site monitor to make sure that the sedimentation and erosion control measures are being maintained appropriately and functioning appropriately. So for all of those reasons, for the fact that it's a relatively moderately sized property, there's phasing, that the disturbance will be phased over time and not of significant size, that the site is not steep, that the measures will be installed and maintained and monitored in accordance with the state requirements. It's my belief that the potential for an adverse impact to the wetlands from, during construction in the short-term, that there would not be a potential for an adverse impact from, from those activities. So in the long-term, then we look at the stormwater management system. Today, much of the water that falls on the property infiltrates into the ground and slowly makes its way to that wetland. That wetland is fed mostly with groundwater discharge. There's some surface water runoff, but on a property like that, the amount of surface water runoff for the critical storms is very limited. And what I consider critical storms for the health of the wetland are the storms that are small and that are frequent, the storms that happen on a regular basis. Storms that are often, a lot of time is spent discussing the two-year storm, the five-year storm, the 10-year storm. Those are large and infrequent storms. So, if you have a storm once every five years, well, what's happening the rest of that time? And of course, the storm can occur more than once every five years, but on average, it's once every five years. So, what's really making that area wetland are those average storms, which are about a half-inch rainfall. They happen on average about every three days in our area, and that's those, when you only have a half-inch of rainfall and it lands on the land, whether it's a lawn or a woodland, most of that's infiltrating into the ground, and the plants either take it up or then slowly makes its way laterally towards downslope until it intercepts a wetland or a stream. And that's, that's how this wetland's being fed by, primarily by water from the small, frequent storms. So, the design for this project, because we're going to be introducing impervious surfaces, structures, pavement, we're going to enter, cut off that infiltration that occurs with those smaller storms, but the project has been designed to mimic that process, and the water will be collected from those impervious surfaces and directed to infiltration systems. And that includes porous pavement, and it includes the, the stormwater chambers that are proposed in this area. And so, when those smaller storms happen, that water's collected, it's put into those basins. The water quality treatment volume is based on a one-inch storm, so that's double the size of an average storm. And those chambers have enough storage in the bottom, the gravel bed that's in the bottom of those chambers is sufficient to hold that one-inch storm. So even if you had two average storms within one week, there's enough room to hold that water and slowly infiltrate it into the ground and allow that water to make its way to the wetland similar, in a similar way that it happens today in, with the current development of the property. There, the primary difference between this application and the application that was before you in 2019 is the addition of the stormwater basin in the northeastern corner of the property in this area here. As Brian indicated, that was a result of this soil testing that was conducted that indicated that infiltration rates were lower than, than what was previously considered with the previous application. So, that basin, then, its primary function, the, the size of that is being driven by the larger storms. And so, for the smaller storms, it really does not have a, a significant effect. The smaller storms are still being trapped within that infiltration system that's below the parking lot, although that's, that's for water from the development. One, one benefit of this basin, an additional benefit of this basin for the wetland, is that the water that's coming off these landscape backyards, the water that's coming off the roofs of, of all these homes, as it makes its way, some of it's infiltrating into the ground, but if it doesn't infiltrate in the ground, it then is held in that basin, that shallow basin, and given a further opportunity to infiltrate into the ground, be cleaned, and allowed it to slowly make its way to the wetland and ensure that that wetland continues to function as it does today. The project, at, at, when the project is completed, one-third of the project will be in, maintained in a naturalized state. And what I mean by that is that it'll, it'll be vegetated with native vegetation. This, this area, the southern, central and southern portion will have native ground cover and shrubs and trees, mostly, most of the, the existing vegetation will remain here except for invasive vegetation. here except for invasive vegetation. This plan that I'm pointing to here is the drawing that our office prepared. It's titled Wetland Buffer Management Plan Number WP 1.0. The plan includes a, the drawing includes a, a plan, a planting plan for the entire property as well as a management plan for the eastern portion of the property. And this eastern portion of the property is proposed to be put into a conservation easement. And it includes nearly all of the regulated upland review area, the 90-foot, the 90-foot area that extends off of the wetland. There's just a small area here that's not within that 90-foot. But then there's, it's much wider than 90 feet at the northern portion of the property. So, on average, around this wetland, there's certainly 90-foot, on average, of naturalized, vegetated area. The, the proposed basin, there will be, that area will be cleared during construction, but then it will be re-vegetated with establishing a meadow with native vegetation, herbaceous vegetation, both grasses and then also wild, native wildflowers. And then, quite a few native trees will be planted in that basin to help enhance the habitat in that area. So, in the long term, this entire area will be maintained as a forest, as it is today. The amount of forest will be more than there is today because we're going to expand that into areas that is currently within the rough lawn area, the area in the central portion of the property that is rough lawn. We're going to expand the forest in this bottom corner here and a little bit up, I believe, a little bit up in this area right there. The drawing, in addition to, and I'll just say the planting that's proposed, other than lawn areas, which are very lim, which are very limited, all the other planting proposed on the drawing are, are native plants. We have a plant list, and then we have a Habitat Enhancement Management Notes. It talks about, it provides objectives, which are to control, remove debris and large brush piles that have been put into this area over time, over many decades. We're going to remove that debris and brush. Enhance stormwater management with the introduction of the basin. Control the growth, growth of native vegetation and foster the growth of native plant species. And then we have a management methods, and we go through how that'll be done. We then have a schedule at the end and a sequence. So, we have activities for year one, year two, year one through three, and then, long term, into the future. I, we're going to have a demarcation fence along the western boundary of this, and there'll be signs on that to clearly mark that this area is a natural area, conservation easement area, and that it's being maintained. The fact that this property owner will be the housing authority, they have their own management team, and unlike a homeowner or we, if you're reviewing a subdivision or some other development, you don't know who's going to maintain that property. But the applicant will run and maintain this property as they're doing with their property, the pine, yes, as they're maintaining that where they have a number of rain gardens and other buffer. So, they're going to maintain this, this area just like that. And I, I think that's a, a benefit. You're guaranteed who's, who's going to be taking care of this in the long run. So, you're up, regulated upland review area, 95% of that will be naturalized. That's only 5% of it will be the sidewalk, about 100 square feet. And about a, just over 1,000 square feet will be that stabilized lawn area for the fire truck turnaround. Conservation easement area will be eight tenths of an acre. And, be pleased to answer any questions that you might have.
Bill, let me ask you just one question. Your report does talk about the alternative plan we've presented with the smaller detention basin. Just to be clear, both the plan as submitted as well as the alternate with the smaller detention basin, do either of those proposals have any likely adverse impacts, whether direct or indirect, and whether short or long-term to the wetland or any downstream water courses?
My professional opinion is that they do not.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Debby?
For the record, I just want to read from Mr. Kenny's report, quote, "According to best development practices conserving pool breeding amphibians in residential and commercial developments in the northeastern United States," which I believe was the publication that you were referencing earlier.
That's right.
"The land within 100 to 750 feet of the vernal pool is critical terrestrial habitat, which is the primary environment for amphibian life during non-breeding seasons." I'm reading this because Mr. Kenny stated 750 feet, and I would like it in the record that it is a range from 100 to 750 feet. Also, Mr. Kenny, I'm interested, what month in 2019 and then recently were you investigating this wetland and determining that it's not a vernal pool?
Yes, good question. On page three in the introduction of the report, we identify the months that we can, completed our field investigation. So, in that first paragraph, we indicate the month of February, March, the months of February, March, and April of 2019, and then May of 2022.
Thank you for, I, I missed that. And when you were there in May of 2022, you didn't return again anytime of the year last year?
That's, um...
That was the only month you were there?
Of, of this year?
Of, of last year, or, sorry, of this year.
I, I will check on that, but I believe that's the only time we've been out there this year.
Also, I wanted to address a comment that Attorney LeKurt made earlier. Construction in the upland review area that comes in applications before this commission are, are reviewed on an individual and case-by-case basis. The Black Rock Turnpike and Berkeley Road applications are of no relevance to this application.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Fane?
Bill, the up, the forest adjacent to the wetland there, how would you characterize that in terms of age, quality, vigor, and health?
The upland forest?
Existing upland forest, in, in, adjacent to the wetland that exists on the site?
Yes. On page eight of my report, I provide a brief description of, of that forest. We, we identified it as an oak-tulip tree forest. It is a relatively mature forest. So, there's larger trees, there's, there's larger canopy trees, there's understory trees, and then a shrub layer. It's a mix of...
In terms of your own personal experience, would you consider that, in terms of the urban environment, an unusually high-quality forest in that type of environment?
I don't know, nah, not necessarily. It's a mature forest, but I run into forests, particularly in Fairfield County, where farming activities were abandoned quite a while ago for many properties, that I've run into many forests of that age. This, this is heavily browsed. I know there's, there's a small herd of deer that hang out here, and this, this forest is heavily browsed by the deer and pack.
But, in terms of what you're proposing for this detention base, and how much of this area and how many trees are going to be cleared, have you identified individual trees?
We, I don't have that number available right now, but we can certainly provide that for you.
50% of the area would be cleared?
So, the clearing limit, this upper area right here, this clearing limit, so about half of that upper area that's cleared is within the review area and half is outside the review area. But, but from here down, there's no disturbance proposed.
So, you characterize it, after all this clearing, as forest? How long would it actually take for a forest to reestablish itself in the areas it cleared?
For it to be considered a forest, it's going to be decades. It'll be a, a meadow for, with, with young trees for many years.
Yep. And what's the, what's the chances of it actually going back to forest and not being overtaken by invasions?
I think with this property owner, it has a, it, it's going to become a forest.
Are you aware of the decision that this agency, we made on October 7th, 2019, in which they made a, which we made a finding that the, the wetland's physical features do meet the definition of vernal pool?
Yes.
Commissioner, please, thank you.
Necessary for the, for upland habitat for amphibians? And you referred to Dr. Clemens' publication?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You, you, you referred to the, that 700-foot area, and that's, that Dr. Clemens, I guess, asserts, or his publication asserts, necessary for the amphibians to thrive in an upland, in, in the upland area?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the Skelly Lab?
With, which, which...
David Skelly at Yale?
I am from, I am aware of Dr. David Skelly.
Do you familiar with the publication that they put, made in, titled Species Lost in Developed Landscapes: An Experimental Evaluation?
I'm not familiar with that particular...
Commissioner, sorry, continue to...
I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'll just read, it was a study of wood frog populations in undisturbed and disturbed areas, and they concluded that they actually needed very little upland area to thrive. And they said, they concluded surprisingly and in spite of substantial differences in surrounding landscape cover, there is no evidence that the performance of larva wood frogs is compromised for being reared in wetlands located in developed landscapes behind the edge of their contact, current distribution. And then, he went on to say, "These are remarkable findings." I'll put this on the record, but I just wanted to get that out there. Again, I'm, I'm not making any personal findings regarding the vernal pool, but the agency already has made a finding of the vernal pool, and this would refute that, that we need a 750-foot upland review area. Finally, I have just questions about the soils on the site, the Woodbridge and Paxton soils, is that correct? The soils in the site are Woodbridge and Paxton?
I believe that's what I concluded with...
And both of those have an impermeable layer or fairly impermeable layer, which infiltration is retarded?
Infiltration vertically, yes.
Right. So, if we excavate out to that pan layer and expect infiltration there and move it to well end, that doesn't seem plausible, does it?
Well, today, what happens in, in soil profiles like that on hillsides is that you, on average, there's two, two feet to three feet, two feet to 30 inches of that looser material sitting above a dense material. And what happens, you have vertical movement of that water, and then it, then it moves, moves laterally. So, it's going to do what it does today. It goes down vertically and then starts to head sideways in a downslope. So, it's going to move through hundreds of feet of soil beneath the ground as it makes its way to the well.
Isn't that, isn't the, the, the bottom of these quartz units go actually deep into the, the pan layer there? When did that retard the infiltration?
I, it won't affect the, I'll, I'll take a look at that and confirm that, but...
Impermeable berm between the wetlands and some of this upland area that would retard infiltration or movement of stormwater also?
Impermeable berm within the...
I, I believe that your engineer referred to it as a berm or a barrier.
There is a impermeable clay liner barrier extending on those three sides.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
Yep.
Please.
Mr. Kenny, who did, who conducted the field investigations that you cited in your report?
Myself, another biologist that's no longer, in 2019, another biologist that's not, not working with me now, and then another biologist that works with me, with me now.
Conservation or wildlife biologists?
Um, they are, do not have a professional certification in, in that, yep.
But is there education in conservation biology or wildlife biology?
I, I have that. I've gone through, I mean, I've been in the field working for over 25 years and have witnessed many, many hundreds of vernal pools and evaluated many, many vernal pools. And I've done studies, taken the programs with Connecticut Deep for Wildlife Naturalists and certifications with that.
But you are not a wildlife or conservation biologist, is that right?
I do not have a certification as a wildlife biologist.
And the others that were conducting the field investigation with you, to your knowledge, they are not conservation biologists or wildlife biologists, is that right?
I'm, Chris, Christopher Allen, I'm not sure if he, I mean, he's been, he's a well-respected, he's worked 30 or 40 years in the, in the region. I don't think anyone, or no one, there, no one has found any evidence of breeding or development of vernal pool obligate species on this property. The town staff has reviewed it and looked for it, and no evidence has been found.
Commissioners, any further questions, comments? When you, you just mentioned town staff has looked for it? Which town staff are you discussing that looked for it?
Annette Jacobson, who had more than 30 years of experience with your, with your board. She, she reviewed the project and provided staff reports during, in 2019.
Okay, but not this staff? So, because I, I, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but the staff's report now from Mr. Bishop has, that he, he's recommending that the agency retain a professional opinion of a third-party consultant who is an expert in wetland science and more specifically, vernal pools. So, we have somebody currently from the staff who's recommending that we do that, so I'm not sure.
I appreciate what you're saying. There's quite a history of discussion about this topic and, and the, the information that was in the record from 2019, the judge concluded that, I, I'm pretty certain the judge concluded that it, based on the information in the record of everyone who looked at it at that time, that it was not a vernal pool.
Okay. Is, is it, is it, are we able to look at it again now, or should we only look at 2019?
You, you certainly have a right to...
Okay.
...review whatever you want.
All right, thank you.
I don't question that.
Okay, thank you.
And for the record, Annette Jacobson, to my knowledge, was a compliance officer, not a biologist.
She has, well, you could look, she, with every application she always handed in her curricula vitae or vitae, and she had many, many, many years of experience and graduate degrees in the University of New Haven and, and was well-respected and worked for the town for many years.
As a compliance officer, right?
I, I don't know her particular, I mean, she reviewed, she did the technical review for every wetland project before the commission, so I...
Thank you. Yes, Tim?
For what it's worth, I, I believe her title was either wetlands or conservation administrator.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners of this witness? Nope? Oh, yes, please.
The, Bill, you referenced that we had approved an application before with an activity in the upland review area. I mean, your, your, your analyses are quite complex, right? I mean, you're not limited to an analysis of proximity, proximity to a wetland, right? I mean...
Exactly.
Isn't it true that an, an activity on a site that's entirely outside of the upland review area could have more impact on a wetland than one that has a small encroachment on an upland review area?
Most definitely. Like, this project that's proposed, if there was no stormwater management system proposed to manage and control that, then that would have an impact. If that was, if it was entirely outside the review area but with no BMPs, no soil erosion and sediment controls, that would have an impact. So, proximity, it's, that's not the only factor to consider. So, I hope that you keep that in mind.
Thank you. Yep, please.
Just one more thing. It's been mentioned several times... Just one more thing, um, it's been mentioned several times tonight that there is no current stormwater control system in place on this property, and I just want to clarify that there isn't because there's nothing there. There's no development there, there's a house with, um, some gutters, um, so I just want to make that clear in the record.
Thank you.
I think when you approve a, a, a single-family home like that, you do require stormwater management fa, features for every new home that you approve.
Yes, absolutely. I just want to make it clear that there's no benefit to adding the stormwater control in the absence of the development. There doesn't need to be stormwater control on a vac, on the vacant part of the lot because there is nothing there.
Guess the further that, uh, existing houses that don't have stormwater systems are not compelled to add them.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, um...
Thank you, Commissioner.
You have one more witness, you think?
We do, we have Mr. Saltis, the LEP, Jay Saltis.
I, are you, have you had any discussions with him as to what his testimony will be?
I know exactly what his testimony is going to be.
Can you estimate, I mean, I, I'd, I'd wanted to kind of take a gauge at ten thirty, we're at that point now. If, if you think your, your last witness might be, um, you know, within a reasonable amount of time...
I, I think it will, but he's just gonna be discussing the, the phase one he did, some constituents he'd located on the site around the existing building, in the soil, some old pesticides, and the fact that that's gonna be removed from the property completely.
Okay.
We'll keep it quick.
Okay, please, okay. Please commence, and let's see if we can, yep.
I know.
Good morning, Mr. Saltis, could you just, again, tell everyone your name, and what is an LEP, a licensed environmental professional, please?
My name's Jay Saltis, I'm an LEP with GeoQuest, with offices in Bloomfield and Shelton. An LEP is a licensed environmental professional, it's a state licensing program, it basically allows me to work on behalf of the DEEP on certain projects that are within their programs. That's, that's the nutshell version.
And in connection with the prior application, you performed a phase one environmental site assessment, correct, which we've now introduced to the record, is that true?
That's correct.
And, uh, what exactly is a phase one ESA, please?
So it's the first step of an environmental investigation of the site, it's mainly paperwork and visiting the site, looking for potential environmental concerns or issues at the site. Uh, the big term we use for these sites is recognized environmental conditions, that's what you're mainly looking for, areas of concern are kind of your secondary lesser important concerns.
And were any recognized environmental concerns identified on this property?
No, there were no REC's for the property, which I was not expecting any based on the residential use.
Did you also look for pesticides on the property?
We did note that in there as a, as one of our concerns about the site, because any site that's had agricultural history, we often make a recommendation to look into it.
And you, did you do sampling on the site for pesticide analyses?
We did, we did some initial testing in the fields and around the structures, and based on the initial findings, we didn't find anything above state criteria in the fields at all. We found some low concentrations of, I believe it was chlordain, an old organochlorine pesticide from way back when. Um, around the structures, we found much higher levels, so that became the focus of our supplemental testing.
So you did the supplemental testing, once you determined there were some pesticides around the old farm building and barn, correct?
Correct, yep.
Was that something unusual, to find pesticides around the perimeter of buildings?
No, quite common, people like to keep the pests out of their structures, so that's, you see that quite often.
And did you use EPA method eighty-eighty-one for your sampling?
We did, yep.
And did you also analyze for leachable pesticides using the SPLP and eighty-eighty-one method?
We did, that was, based on our initial findings, we took the absolute worst sample we found, which I believe was near a shed or the barn structure, and then we also took the highest level from the field samples. And we analyzed both of those for SPLP, it's, um, it's a synthetic, synthetic precipitation procedure, they basically are trying to figure out what, what would happen over time as precipitation passes through this.
Did you also analyze the site for recrata metals, and, and what are those?
We did, sure, um, the recrata metals, they're, EPA's list of, of metals that we typically test for, the big two that we would be looking for at this site with regards to pesticides would be lead and arsenic, because those were in the even older version of pesticides that predate the organochlorines that we were testing for. Uh, we did find lead around the structures, but based on my experience and the age of the structure, I believe it's more related to the paint on the, uh, on the barn and the shed and, and the house.
So the contaminants around, in the soil around the structures that are there, do you believe they've been there for decades?
Uh, yeah, definitely.
And are they mobile?
No, that's, that's another thing we did test, we looked at, we typically, so, so we follow, DEEP has guidance for the development of former agricultural properties, and that's kind of our handbook for what to do at these sites. Uh, the first thing you do is you test the top zero to three inches, because that's where you would expect to find pesticides, assuming things hadn't been turned over. Um, we found, you know, based on what we found there, and the fact that we were going back to do supplemental testing, we did some deeper samples, and often, as, as I often see, same thing, you do, the concentrations decrease significantly once you get to a foot below grade.
Now, am I correct that because of the, the discreet location of these pesticides, they could have just been mixed in with the soil and spread out throughout the site to dilute their concentrations, that is an option that would be allowed?
Oh, in the, yeah, and the guidance, it's one of the few times DEEP allows you to, dilution is a solution to pollution, right? They actually allow you to do that. It's very uncommon in my world. Uh, but that's the one scenario where you can actually dilute it to levels below the state's criteria.
And in fact, what is your proposal to do with the pesticides around the foundation in this case?
So because it's isolated to being around the structures, the proposal is to, we develop the soil management plan that would be implemented after the structures are demolished, so that would be the barn, the garage, and the shed. We'd, uh, go and excavate the top eighteen inches of soil around there for, dispose of it off-site, most likely a landfill, do closure confirmation sampling after that to confirm we got the worst of the worst, and that we're compliant with criteria.
And I know, I understand, you testified that these pesticides are non-mobile. Do you have an opinion as an LEP as to whether the project as proposed, including the soil management, will cause any discharge of pesticides into the wetlands?
No, I think because of the way we would come in in the phasing, we would be there after the sediment and erosion controls are in place, and we're really only disturbing the top eighteen inches in a fifteen-foot radius around each of the buildings, so it's very, very limited disturbance, and we're, we're all the way against high street.
And you plan on being on site during this process?
Yes, yep.
And, uh, will any soils with the constituents of concern be handled totally within DEEP protocol?
Uh, yes, yes.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of this witness? No.
And I understand you haven't seen my report, so obviously, if there are questions...
Tim?
Thank you, um, yeah, I, I did just have a brief question, as you pointed out, we did receive, um, said documents, uh, late this afternoon. Uh, those will be, um, formally admitted and distributed. Um, just a, a quick point of clarification, uh, for the record, environmental consultant of almost nineteen years, uh, in New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut, um, specializing in contaminant hydrogeology and site investigation remediation. Um, would the, um, twenty nineteen criteria in comparison to the RSRs be updated to, um, current wave-two guidelines?
Definitely.
And do you anticipate any, um, changes in the results with respect to RDEC and GAPMC?
Uh...
As far as compliance?
Yeah, no, I mean, the, the current standards are what we'll be using for the soil management plan.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments for this witness? No. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Counsel?
I have no further witnesses, I, I suppose you want to hear comments before we do any conclusions and
Yeah.
Or address any of your staff comments.
That's right, yeah. So I will now open it up to overall comments for the whole thing, to counsel and to the representative, um, commissioners, I think I'll try to, for tonight's purposes, limit that to about ten minutes, um...
Before you do that, we may have to call evidence back, because we didn't get to be pointing that either.
Oh, you didn't, is that the one that would, that, is that the report that we just got today?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great. Okay. See that? Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that that's the report that came into, yeah, um, and I, maybe it's prudent to stop here.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think it's prudent to stop here because there's documentation that you, the applicant provided today that we have not seen. And then also, I think, um, in addition to that, I think there are members of the public who provided, or attempted to provide documentation today that you would want us to see. So I think it might be prudent to continue this, uh, to allow the commissioners time to review all the documents, giving also the applicant and the public, um, more time to submit any further documentation that they may need to submit so that, um, we can review it. I, I would, uh, ask anybody who's here, or anybody who's online who can hear this, please submit documents, uh, at the very least, two days before the hearing, um, we just simply can't review it if it's provided to us at four o'clock on the day of.
Now, we, and we, to, you know, just to clarify, we just got the staff report a few days ago, and, and that's why when we saw it referencing the LEP, I wanted to get that too.
Counsel, this was, that was no...
No, no, I, I, no, no, I just wanted to, yeah. One other thing I may want to suggest, though, I know your staff report had a suggestion about sending this out for a review, and I don't know if you want to discuss that tonight, so you can get that process started if you're thinking of adopting that suggestion, rather than waiting till next month.
Okay, um, commissioners, you guys in favor of having a third-party review, as Tim, uh, suggested in his staff review?
Can I make a motion?
Yep.
I move to, uh, for the department to move forward on getting that third-party review.
Okay, um, any second, I, Commissioner, would you be able to clarify that as to what they'd be reviewing? How would we do that?
I'll, I'll second it, and then for the purposes of discussion, I'm just gonna say, is this the right time of the year that we should be inspecting that as well, too?
That's right.
I, I think, you, at minimum, we need to have a, a professional engineer to review the drainage report, um, and then, um, we probably should consider hiring an environmental consultant to review the, uh, the wetlands aspect of it, but we probably need...
But wouldn't one of the major wetland aspects of it be the vernal pool issue?
That would be, that would be what...
Wouldn't that only occur between, let's say, February and May? Or can they do that now?
You would, you would ask, you would get the expertise of that expert to advise you on that.
Okay.
Okay, I think that was
Yeah.
The best way to, to phrase that, and they might say that, you can't evaluate that, but that would be up to that expert to provide that opinion.
Did we just then say that there are now two experts that we need?
No, I, I second the motion tonight.
Right, no, right, but the, the comments kind of make it sound like that we might need two separate experts.
I, I think you do, um, but I would also look to the previous, um, denials and the court issues, and it may, it basically boiled down to the stormwater aspect.
Stormwater.
So, at, at a minimum, you would need a professional engineer.
That's a different motion.
I think it also helps to have the, um...
Yeah. No, so anybody, anybody can amend.
Also, just to point out that both, uh, both of those, uh, experts are listed in number one in my recommendation.
That's right.
Separately.
I guess the other question, can I ask a question?
Right here.
We still have discussion. Is, is
Yes.
How does this get funded? Is this through the town, or does the applicant fund this?
I thi, I believe it's the applicant.
You got an answer on that one?
I believe it is the applicant, uh, in the past, but I guess I'd have to double-check with town council on that.
And we do have the request for fee waiver, we wanted to be reconsidered here, that you did take up last time, now that we had some discussion as to what the Fairfield Housing Corporation is, and, and the fact that, uh, you know, this isn't something that's budgeted for fees, because the fees only come from HUD and from residents' rental payments.
Okay. I, I think that's a worthwhile discussion, but we, a little housekeeping, we gotta do some of this in order.
Yeah, let, let, let's first keep on, we have a motion, we have seconded, um, somebody would like to amend it, they may, it could be either Dabney, or it could be somebody else to amend the original motion, um, oh, no, I don't believe she has to do it. He does, she doesn't have to.
Sure, amend the motion that we consider hiring professional consultants to review the drainage aspect, a professional engineer and a wetland consultant to hire, to review the wetland component of this application.
Yep, so that's, so the motion has been amended, okay? Ri, ri, right, so, uh, did you get, who got the motions? Okay, okay, well, no, no, so, uh, okay, so, now for that motion, we can either have discussion, or we can vote. I think we discussed enough, but we can, we can vote in favor? All right, okay, so, um, the applicant, you guys can discuss with Tim on, on that, okay? Um, we've, we've ruled on the fee waiver in the prior meeting, um, the applicant has requested that, that motion be, um, reconsidered. Would any commissioner wish to?
I will.
Um...
It should be noticed and put on the agenda.
I think that might be correct. I think that might...
We should not table it anyway.
We can, we can, we can, yeah, we still have it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Into charge. Yeah, we will, we'll put it on the agenda for the next time. Okay? Uh, and let me just explain to the public what, what's kind of happening here, um, we still have questions of the applicant, we're not finished, so it's still their time to tell us things. Um, we're running out of time just in general for the evening, so, and the, the rules allow us to continue, we have, we don't have to make a decision tonight, we have time to digest the information, and we have time to let everybody else speak as well, so this will be continued to the next meeting, it'll be on, on the agenda, and the applicant will be able to, to pick up from here, basically, and we will continue, and then other people that want to speak in, in, in support of it will be able, allowed to speak, and those who are in, opposed to it, they will be allowed to speak. So whoever is here tonight, and, and don't be disappointed you won't be able to speak tonight, you will have the ability to speak, it just won't be tonight, because we're simply running out of time, just want everybody to know, okay?
And I just want to, uh, speak for the commission to thank the applicant for your patience tonight, Lex involved, we, sorry, we, we appreciate everyone's patience, thank you very much.
Okay, um, all right, well, uh, we, we, it just, it's continued, I don't think we need to do a motion to continue it, right? So it's just, uh, let's, any other business? Huh?
When's the next day? December seventh.
December seventh, and there'll be an agenda, uh, the, the week before, yeah, okay? So, right, so, um, next is other, and Tim, do you want to talk about anything?
No, um, under other before, as people are leaving, I just want to point out that all the documents the department receives, um, from applicants or otherwise, uh, you could get those on our cloud link, which is linked at the top of the agenda, or if you go to our homepage, department homepage, those, uh, the link is on the very bottom, so you'll be able to receive, uh, receive and review all those documents.
Great. Motion to adjourn, second, pick it, anybody, doesn't matter, okay, adjourn. Motion to adjourn, second, pick it, anybody, doesn't matter, okay, adjourn.